My pleasure. This is the flag of the United States of America. And to your Republic, for which it stands, my nation, our God, in your visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, May 26, 2017, at 9:00 AM at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any public comment?
What board comment?
Board comment?
Okay, I'm sorry. Board, talk.
Hey, I got one thing I want to ask Tanya about, I guess. On page four, which is the reserve accounts, I guess you can call it that. Years ago, we did all of our banking, and we still do with TD Bank, and they had a branch here in town, and then they closed the branch and moved it to Lake Placid. And we still do banking with them down there. And I guess my concern is, is that we pay an armored carrier, what, $400 or $500 a month to move our funds from here down there. And so I'm questioning why we don't have a local bank here. Harland Bank, which is right on property, they support our golf communities, so why aren't we banking with them instead of these people? Or at least, put it out for bid, that to bring that banking in, first of all, would save $5,000 a year right off the bat by not paying the armored carrier. So that's one question I have. And on the other, on the same page, is we have LGIP funds, which are government funds, which haven't been performing very well. And there's $216,000 in that. I'm just questioning why, if it would make sense to move that into a CD where we'd get more interest on that. And might be some leverage for local banks to give us a nod. So on that note, you want to comment on that, or not? No? Okay. All right. On page five, and page six, and page seven, we have a total of $46,774,000 in unpaid assessments, bonds, liens, everything else. And I know a big portion of that $46 million is recorded deeds, land available for sale. We own a lot of that. The county owns a lot of that. But my point is, within the remainder, whatever that number is, let's say it's $15,000, $20,000 million, why aren't we looking through that property and finding the good properties in there and start foreclosing on these properties and create some properties that we can actually resell and make some money on? It might be a huge project to even think about, I don't know, but maybe we need a legal assistant for somebody to go ahead and get this project going. I mean, if we only recovered $1 million of that, I mean, it would be a huge benefit to the community, so.
We are researching these type of properties that would be valuable, that are on this page. I mean, like you said, there's $46 million in owed assessments and bonds. But I will say, a majority of the properties on this list have bonds on them, and they are vacant lots. And with the bonds, they're worthless. So really, there's no reason that, you know, we would go after these properties, because if we did, and we foreclosed on vacant lots with bonds, we still assume the bond, and the liability is still there. So we are, we have looked into some of the lots on this page that don't have bonds. And, but, you know, like I said, a majority of it is in the name of lands available, which the county will own within the next year or two. So there is some valuable properties, yes.
Okay. And are we doing something about it, other than just looking at it, or?
We, in the last two weeks, we've submitted a list of 20 vacant lots to the attorney to actually start foreclosure on vacant lots. And this is something that the district, we have not done this since I've been employed with the district. So we are seeing some movement, and we have found some valuable lots that don't have bonds.
Well, my next question is, is that cost effective for us to use Mr. Shoemaker's firm, or have our own person doing it? I mean, what's the trade-off?
Well, so far, it is. I mean, like I said, I believe it was 20. Does that sound right?
It's about right.
About 20 or so.
Yeah, it's about right.
Okay.
So so far, we don't, we don't.
It is effective using the clerk's office right now. We don't have the big inventory of lots. Like I said, we picked out 20 out of all the listed properties. We don't have a wide range that we're going to go after. You know, we don't have 150 lots that we're going to go after without bonds. So using McClure's office, we establish a flat fee, so we know what our cost's going in, and we know that we can, once we resell it, we'll get our money back.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up to Kurt's question. So since the land's available, there's roughly $15 million, 15.363, available for taxes. And that's taxes as well as assessments, correct? Or is that?
That is just assessments and bonds.
That is also bonds?
Yes. Yes, bonds is included in this page, so any?
No, I'm talking on the lands available.
Yes.
That's also bonds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Am I understanding now, I got lost there for a minute, you're on that land swap deal?
No.
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 No, we're not.
Where are you at?
Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report, okay. All right. Are we making any money off of that? That's the question I wanted to ask.
Off what?
Whatever, whatever he's supposed to be picking up on these lands and whatever.
That's what they just discussed, and she, Tanya, has looked into 20 lots. That's all we can look at, right now.
Well, is it profitable for the district to do it?
Yeah.
That's what they're studying.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I got lost, sorry.
Anything else, guys?
No.
Chrissy?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to accept the action agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any board comment?
Nope.
Public comment? Okay.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017-0512-27. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to discontinue the lot swap program established by the District Resolution 03-37 and 10-11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion here?
Nope.
Okay. Public comment?
You're trying to get back 20 lots. Maybe some of those lots could be used in the lot swap program. I don't understand why you want to get rid of that program. You know, just leave it where it's at. It isn't hurting anything. It isn't bothering anybody. Why, why is it so important to get rid of it? Do you have an answer to that?
I'll give you an answer. What I questioned was, why are we paying legal fees in acquiring lesser value property at the expense of the district? I don't have a problem with the program, per se, but I have a problem with the way it's written. And what I ask is, either we rewrite the program or discontinue it. Apparently, Mr. Gilpin decided he wanted to discontinue it, so that's kind of where we're at.
Well, maybe what we should be doing is looking at it and rewriting it, rather than getting rid of it. Because if we're going to get 20 lots on a foreclosure, maybe we can use some of those lots in a lot swap program, where some of these people aren't paying their taxes and would be willing to buy or swap programs and start paying their taxes. That was the whole purpose behind this program. You know?
Understand.
Some of these people, some of you people on that board, don't remember why we did it. And if you go back and look at the reasoning behind some of these things that were done, you'd understand why it was done. So let's not just jump to conclusions and do things right off the get-go, because we don't like the way it was done, or we don't like what's being said. Let's analyze it a little bit more, before we just jump to conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it can also be reinstated. If we do get some inventory, we can bring it back again. There's nothing wrong with doing that.
Or we can change it.
Well, we're definitely going to change.
Why, why not just change it, instead of getting rid of it, then maybe bring it back, maybe not bring it back, maybe do this, maybe do that? If you're gonna, if you got a problem with it, then let's rewrite it, and make the corrections to it, and leave it where it's at.
I had no intention of being back and forth, or, well, anyway, and this came in whenever I moved in here in 2011. And that was swapped, where more or less was the lands in a field, or out in the boondocks, you might say, that people bought for $3,000 or $4,000, and then they wanted to swap them for some up close or to the areas here, which would be in the $10,000 or $12,000 or $14,000 at that time. And I never did approve of that at all. If they bought a $3,000 lot and let them hang on to it, that's the way I feel about it. If it's not making us money, get rid of it. If it can be adjusted where we make money off of it, then do that.
Anybody else? Tanya, do you want to comment at all?
I just want to say that if an owner, if a property owner approaches us, you know, we will absolutely work with that person to find, you know, find something that might be viable for them. The swap program does cost us money. And then we're gaining a lot that we have no use for. You know, and that's, that's a big part of the program right now. So we will, we will work with that person. If we have someone come in the office and say, you know, this is, this is what I want to do, I want to build in Sun and Lake, you know, we will help out that person. It's not that we're going to turn them away. But, you know, we, our inventory, as of today, I mean, is, we're almost down to three, three good lots. And, you know, in five, six, seven years ago, the district had many lots, you know, possibly to swap. But again, the bonds are the issue. I mean, you know, the district does own many lots with bonds, and we can't swap out, you know, lots that have bonds and liens on them. So I just want you to know that if we do have a property owner approach us, we will work with that person in the future, you know, to try to find something that would work for them.
Anything else, guys? The only thing I can say is that it is costing us money. And I agree with Kurt that it's a pretty good program, but it's doing nothing but costing us money, and there's only a few lots. Now, I can promise you, if we get some lots, we'll look at it again, and I'm sure Tanya will do that for us if we get some lots, so. That's all I have here. Chrissy?
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District directing the general manager of Sun and Lake Golf Club regarding negotiations with PGA regarding tour qualifiers.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Motion to approve.
Oh.
Well, we got a.
Okay. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
For a second.
Okay, I guess we don't have a second.
Can I get some clarification on this?
If you want to discuss it, there's got to be a second. Otherwise, it's dead on the table.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Mark, do you want to start?
Yeah. As I understand it, and I'm, we're eliminating, in this, in this resolution, we're eliminating only the qualifier for the Latino Tour, which takes place in January, or traditionally has taken place in January. My concern here is, we received some correspondence that said that the tour wished to entertain having both the Latino Tour, as well as the Canadian Tour here. And was kind of, the way I read it, was somewhat an all or nothing, because they wanted to host both tournaments at the same place. Now, the way this is written, it says, if we discount and say no to the Latino Tour, we're essentially saying no to the Canadian Tour, unless, and maybe Andy can respond to this, unless they can go back to the negotiation table with the Latino, with the Canadian Tour, and bring that in as a separate tour. There's a lot of people that really, really liked the Canadian Tour. But there is equally the same amount that didn't like the Latino Tour. In addition, we asked as a board, and we have received, what the revenues were and the profit. I'm not so sure I agree with some of the numbers, but that's what was provided to us. If it's based on the numbers, I would say, I don't want it.
Andy? So if I understand the question mark, it's, you want to know if that's what the tour stance is, the kind of both or none?
Well, that's kind of the email I received, and I think everybody else on the board received that.
And that's, that's the club's understanding, that if we don't do one, we won't get either.
So by approving this resolution, we're saying no to the Canadian Tour, as well as what you're telling me?
That, that I'm not sure of. I'm not sure how the resolution is written.
Yeah, it's basically the way this is saying, is it's, the board is directing the general manager of the Sun and Lake Golf Club to negotiate only for the Canadian Tour. So, I mean, the board's position, directing the general manager, is that we're only going to host the Canadian. So if the PGA's position is it's both or nothing, then if there's no other negotiation reached, then I guess that's it. It's both or nothing.
Kurt, Larry?
Okay. I'm like a lot of other members here. I really don't like the Latin American Tour. They do a lot of damage to the golf course, and they do it at a time that is, the golf course doesn't heal. But in reality, guys, you're going to have to think about this a lot, because almost $11,000 in pure profit comes from that.
I disagree.
The other side of it is, I talked to Jim earlier in the week, and it's not positive that we can't have the Canadian Tour, but it's an awful good possibility that we'll lose them both. Now you're losing approximately $22,000. And in talking to Jim a little bit, his idea this year was to approach him at $52,000 for the two tours, instead of what we've been drawing, which would increase things considerably. But he was figuring on maybe settling someplace between $48 and $50. That, that still leaves us, even at $48, it leaves us an extra $3,000 that we don't have in this year's. So we're talking about a big chunk of money. You're talking as much as $25,000 in pure profit. You can't walk away from that. If we do, we're going to have to put it back on the members, or somebody that's making the gain from it. And that $25,000 figures $70 a person for members. $140 per couple in a, in a family membership, and $70 in a single, just to, just to make that profit up. And we're at the budget time. We're trying to figure out budget, and yep, we're willing to give away that kind of money? It's ridiculous. That's my comment.
Kurt?
Well, I guess when I read the resolution, I looked at it, and it says, it's okay to displace members in April, but it's not okay to displace them in January. And I guess I don't understand that line of thinking, for starters, number one. Also, you know, people say they don't want it, but at the Latino Tour, there was 120 players here, and 70 of them found housing here. So in my way of thinking is, if I don't want the tour here, I'm not going to provide housing for a player. So I'm saying, there's a lot of people that want to have this tour here. And there might be a select few of people that have a big voice, and got the ear of some people, and don't want it, and that's, that's fine, that's their opinion. The third thing I don't like about this thing is, if you have any selling experience at all, you never tell the customer you don't want to sell your product to them. And that's basically what you're saying here. If you don't want the deal to go through, you make the customer tell you he can't afford to buy your product. You don't just say, I don't want you here anymore, because you just burned the bridge. And four or five years down the road, you might want those guys back here, and they're going to say, you know, hit the road. And the third thing, or fourth thing, is the marketing aspect of it. How many clubs can brag that they have two qualifying tours at their course every year? Very, very few people. And there is some value to being able to say that, so. And I'm suggesting, you know, to tag on to Larry's comment, if we do do this thing, and first of all, the numbers are wrong, I agree with Mark, even that first page here, they added up 500, 500, and 600, and come up 1,100. Well, in my mind, that's $1,600, not $1,100. So that's wrong from the get-go. But what I'm suggesting is, is that we, if we have one tour, the charge is $30,000. If we have both of them here, it's $27,000 apiece. And we do a two-year contract, auto renewal, with a 5% escalator every year. That would be something that I would propose to them, in terms of making them either belly up to the bar, or go down the road, so. But the member displacement thing, I don't understand that. Why is it okay for me as a member that I can be displaced in April, but it's, I can't, you know, I don't understand the thinking, and I, somebody explain that to me, please.
We didn't displace any members in April, and we did in January.
Yeah, but you said it's okay to displace them.
But we didn't. We don't have to do it in April. That's your explanation.
That isn't the way the resolution is written, so that, to me, is, that's one of the reasons I just, I don't like the way it's written, period.
Okay. Will we?
Yeah. I just don't like how this was handled. And to be quite honest, we can give you some examples. Last July, we told Billy Casper we didn't want, did not want the Latino Tour that we wanted the Canadian Tour. We thought, we thought we'd put that to rest. We told people we weren't going to have two of them, we're going to have one. If we had two, we'd be the only golf course in America that has two of these qualifiers. I'm not saying that as bragging, I'm just saying, it's taking up two weeks of our golf. January, the reason you displace more people is because there's more people here than there was when the Canadian Tour was here. After we made that decision, although it wasn't a vote, but we made the decision, I thought it was put to rest. Then all of a sudden, it comes up again, floats to the top again, like some other stuff floats. And I didn't like that idea, that that was brought up behind our back, be talking about the Latino Tour again, when we told them we didn't want it. If they would have been notified last July, it wouldn't have been a question today. It would never have been questioned. We'd still be talking about the Canadian Tour again, and that's the one we want to talk about. So if we vote this down, don't need to have one of them, Billy Casper takes that to them, and they decide they don't want to come, don't put that on my shoulders. I already told, last July, what I wanted done, and we all decided that's what we wanted done. If they had been notified, we wouldn't be here today discussing this. And then all of a sudden, when the Canadian Tour's here, here comes someone in, with no notification, we understand, just walks in, and PGA, and starts telling us again what we're going to do. Gives us an ultimatum, that we have both tours or no tours. We checked with Reunion, I did, they had the tour, they got rid of it because it wasn't worth it to them, the tour up the golf course, it displaced membership, it wasn't worth the money. That's why they think these things keep getting passed around. But if this was been handled correctly, like we already issued that, we wouldn't be here today. We'd already been under contract with the Canadian Tour to come back again. If we want to rewrite this, we can rewrite it. But I'm telling you now, the membership, and it's just not a few people have come to me and said, there wasn't any interest in Latino Tour. If they want to board these people, board them in the Canadian Tour, if that's what they want to do. I'll tell you how much interest there was in the tournament, and this is the only viable way I can do this. During the Canadian Tour, it come down to the end, with a few guys coming in, pretty well, they were close, within stroke to each other, and there were a lot of carts up on 18 Hill. The reason those carts were there, because there was a boy from Effingham, Illinois, that was in the run. And those were all Effingham people. We know we got a lot of Effingham people, and they were all for celebrating, drinking beer, and having a good time. When he didn't make it, they had a playoff, and he wasn't in it. It went to, they played 18 twice, there was a few people watching it. They went down to 10, and Denny Vogel and I got in the cart, and drove out on 18T and watched it. Now, this is the finals of the tournament. Who wins? It's supposed to be big time, which didn't get in the paper. It's supposed to be big time. There were nine carts down there, two of them were PGA people, and there was about 10 or 11 people watching. The championship. So really, how much interest do we have in this? I just, I don't like the way it went about, I just don't like that. If we have to visit this again, with a contract from Billy Casper, Billy Casper could get with the Canadian Tour, I would visit it again. But I cannot tell you I'm in favor of the Latino Tour. I can't tell you, because it was handled, I don't think it was handled upfront, upfront with this board. Now, we're forced to vote on something that we didn't even have time to talk to the membership about, because most of them left. I just don't think that was fair, and I'd only be put in this position again.
You know, one more comment, and to support what Larry's saying, is that all these people that said, I don't want it, if you told them it's going to cost you, what'd you say, $140 a membership more, for them not to be here, what do you think they would say then?
Well, first of all, we aren't going to charge them. We're going to lose the money in some fashion, we have to make it up somewhere else. And I don't believe these numbers at all. Not at all. Because I've talked to some people who work on the golf course, they aren't in these numbers. They come off turtle, or come over and work in deer, dragging greens, and fairways, and plugging, and mowing, and, and those numbers aren't in there. I went and asked Jim about it, he told me, well, they were just off their jobs, we were back in Denver. And that means the jobs that weren't being done while they were over there on deer. So they didn't make up time. And I don't think, if you tell the people it's costing $50, you're not asking them to pay that $50, we have to make it up somewhere else. I think I can find you all that $50, that money with the RV park. Because we're not going to pay $300,000 for that RV park, I can tell you that right now. So take that out of the budget, put that in there, and send the Latino Tour home.
Anybody else?
I'll follow up with that. You know, at the very beginning, when I asked the question, because of the way the resolution was written, it was somewhat confusing. And that's why I asked if this was an all or nothing. I understand here, it says, we will not negotiate, essentially, with the Latino Tour. My whole question, and I'm, I'm actually in favor of voting in this direction. But I also was cautious, because we were being held possibly hostage, and I was trying to get some clarification, that's why I asked Andy, and I didn't know if he had some insight. Jim, I hate to give up both. Jim, I hate to give up both, but if I had to do that, I would, I would lean in that direction. And yes, I would give up the revenue dollars, because I don't believe these numbers at all. I've run my own numbers, and I don't know how they come up with it. And a lot of it was guess.
Are there certain numbers that are, you know, which numbers are you questioning, Mark, in particular?
I'm questioning all of the expenses that we don't see here. We prepare for these tournaments, both of them, well in advance, okay? We have our people out there, they're prepping. I mean, I live on the course, I see what's going on. They're out there prepping two and three weeks in advance. That labor is coming, it's either costing us something, or it's coming off of the other course. And to say that it's five hundred dollars in extra labor, and I just, I don't see how they can come up with that number. They also averaged out the green fees over a number of years. Some, some years were lean and some were better, okay? I don't know if there's an easy, easy way of doing that, but the loss of revenue they talk about in green fees, or the gain in revenue, is subject to discussion as well, which I don't want to go into here, because it'd be hours. And thirdly, you know, I might, might be short-sighted on this. The Canadian tour charged three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to these kids to come in and play, okay? I know they have expenses, I know they have overhead, and they gave us twenty-three thousand dollars. So, you know, for us to be giving away our course and displacing numbers, I don't think is right.
So I'll speak to where the numbers came from on, on this report here. Those numbers were pulled from, you know, when we're comparing kind of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Those are pulled, pulled from our IBS reports, which are in our system. And then, down here with the total labor hours, those are pulled from our EDP. So it's, all those numbers are true. When you've got the week before, the week of, and the week after, those numbers, we've, we've got documentation for, you know, through our IBS report, so. You know, they're certainly a, somewhat of an added expense when you, when you host a large tournament like both of those. You know, the way I look at it, you know, we've got roughly twenty grand in revenue between the two tournaments, you know, and if we do, if the, if the tour, and we're, we're beginning negotiations with them, you know, we, there's nothing set in stone there. They have said, you know, both are nothing, but we've, we haven't really sat down at the table with them and gave them an offer for them to counteroffer. So, you know, the negotiation process is just kind of beginning. But with that twenty thousand dollars in revenue, you know, if we don't have it, it's got to come from somewhere. You know, I mean, that's, that's one question. You know, and two is definitely, you know, it's great to say that we host two PGA tournaments every year. From a marketing standpoint, from the tours development council standpoint, that's, when you're talking about bringing people here to Sebring and they see PGA Tour, well, they're going to automatically know that Sunna Lakes has a good golf product here and come to see us. So, you know, from my, from my standpoint, you know, you've got the revenue aspect, and then we also have the, the marketing aspect. And we're always looking for ways to market Sunna Lake better and better and get more homeowners and, and do that type of thing. So from, from a negotiation standpoint, we're just beginning. You've got the revenue aspect, you've got the marketing aspect, we've got the member displacement aspect. Those are all things that we want to look at, and I don't, I guess I wouldn't want to jump the gun. I would say we can always tell them, no, down the road, we're here, sitting here in May, and, you know, if we, if we shoot it all down today, you know, then there's, then there's no negotiations going further. So I guess it's a matter of if we're willing to negotiate with them or not.
Okay. But back to what Wally basically said, is, last July, almost a year ago, everybody on this board thought that this was a done, closed deal, that the Latino tour was not coming back. For whatever reason, that door was opened again. And, you know, we're trying to close it again here, and we're getting a little bit of resistance, I think, because we're being held hostage to say, oh, well, you know, we, we want both of them. And I'm not saying that that can't be negotiated, so that, you know, it's kind of that feeling that when somebody holds you hostage like that, you're saying it's an all or nothing, that's not a good feeling, that's not a good relationship to enter into, you know? And by, at least this resolution, we're saying, "Look, we'd be more than happy to entertain the Canadian tour again. However, at this particular moment in time, we feel that the Latino tour disrupts us too much for, for the return," basically.
Sure. And maybe we've, you know, let's just, I'll throw a number out there, if it was fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars, would the board consider hosting them both at that point? So, and, and what I'm saying is, we haven't even put that out there to them. Is there a certain number that we get to, to where it's like, well, this does make sense when we're analyzing everything, you know, to host both of them? But we haven't really thrown any numbers out there at them yet. So, when the decision was made last July, you know, that we didn't want to have the, the Latino back, we were under contract still for this year. So, I, I don't know what was said at that time to them, that, you know, we're not going to have you back after this year or not, but there's no contract moving further. We don't have to host the Latino. But I, I think it's smart for us to maybe go to the negotiation table and say, "Hey, here's, you know, here's what we can, here's what we'd like to do." And we start at a number and we negotiate from there, and, and then at that time, you make a decision. You know, I think it's, our standpoint is, we just don't want to jump the gun on that, and maybe we can get through the negotiation process and, and then make a, a better decision based on, you know, having some more information and seeing what exactly they are willing to do.
Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
We, we can revisit this after we have public comment, but all I'll say, Andy, is, you tried to explain it and you did a good job, but the main thing is, and the question is not answered, how in the heck did it get back? That's, and I'm sure you don't know, but, and, and I don't even want you to even try, but if I'm on this board for another two or three years, I don't want anything like this to ever happen again. So, with that, is there any public comment?
Good morning, Bill Norcross, resident. What did this survey say? Anybody remember? I think the survey says that we didn't want to have the Latino back again because the, the timing factor, and also the disruption on the golf course. Now, I, I really like the Mackenzie tour, because it's at the appropriate time, and perhaps you get a little bit more money, like I, I saw a number of twenty-three thousand bucks. Now, if you have two of these tours together, that's forty-six thousand dollars. Now, we've heard numbers of eleven thousand per tour, we heard forty-eight thousand for both, we've heard fifty thousand for both. So, excluding the labor costs and everything else, we have to kind of look at the bottom line and the inconvenience it is for the golfers. I favored the, I kind of liked the tour, one or two, one particularly at the proper time. And we've gone through, like I say, the, the conditions. You know, we had overseeding, we had a different greenskeeper, we had real problems, we had problems with a lot of volunteers, too. So, I don't know how, like Micah just said, I don't know how this came to surface again, because it was all settled last year in the Golf Committee, because I remember. We reflected the survey. The survey from the members said, "We don't want to have Latino at that particular time." And they think we were getting shot change with that because of the cost factors. So, in conclusion here, I think that somebody dropped the ball, they should have been notified. I thought it was signed, sealed, delivered, that they weren't going to come back and had to fulfill the obligation of the contract. So, I don't know how this resurfaced again. I think it's not right to have Sunna Lake being held hostage, either one or the other. I don't think that's a good negotiating tool either. So, I want you guys to think about it a little bit more and make a decision final.
Thank you. Tom?
Tom Costy, resident. Frankly, I don't, it sounds to me like it's a counterproposal. It's part of negotiation. For the board to turn its back on an item that staff brought back that apparently amounts to over twenty thousand dollars, the board wants to hear about any twenty thousand dollar expenditure before it's made. Well, here's a twenty thousand dollar, evidently a twenty thousand dollar proposal that staff has brought back for your consideration. To say that because we made a decision last year, we don't want to negotiate anymore, I don't, I don't think, I think you guys have got to give attention to something that amounts to that amount of dollars, if it's true. Now, I don't know where the basis of the numbers are, but to say that you're going to walk away from twenty thousand dollars, we can find it elsewhere, if we can find it elsewhere, it shouldn't be there to begin with. And if we're spending money that we don't need to spend, we ought to take that out, regardless of this tour. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Was the, was the, I know we sent out a, a survey last July, you know, asking for member sentiment. Was it, was it voted on at the board to not have it at that point in time?
Oh, it was discussed.
It was discussed, it was consent, you know, and we just assumed.
Am I only?
Was it brought up legally? No, but it was five to nothing.
Sure.
And we even voted five, Jim brought to us that we maybe should cancel it in January, and it was five to nothing not to, because we signed a contract with them, and we thought we should honor that contract. So it wasn't just, I mean, we didn't, we didn't legally vote not to cancel it either, but we told them, "Don't cancel it, that's our feeling." But I guess that was okay with him, but this other part of it wasn't.
Sure, and I guess my comment would be, the survey, if we poll the members whether they like it or not, that's one thing, you know, for them to let us know what their sentiment is, but, you know, there's also the financial impact. You know, if you poll the member and you tell them, you know, "If we have it, you know, it's going to not cost you this, if we don't have it, it's going to cost you this." I think that's a little bit of a different poll, and, you know, from our aspect, you know, we're responsible for the financial part of it, so I think the discussion is a legitimate one, you know, for us to at least negotiate moving forward.
In my mind, it's a ten thousand dollar thing, it's not a twenty, because the Canadian tour would have been here, they said they wanted to stay here, and they were going to do that. And then all of a sudden, just like Wally said, all of a sudden, it's a, you take both of us or not, well, in my mind, it's, it's a ten thousand dollar expenditure, and if we lose twenty, another ten thousand dollars, that's not on us, that's on Casper, or whoever did this.
So, I don't, I don't believe that we were under contract in July for the Canadian tour. You know, had we went to the tour?
They already said they were going to come.
Sure, but I don't believe we were under contract. Had we went to them in July and told them, "There's no way we're hosting the Latino," my only guess would be that there's a possibility that we wouldn't have the Canadian this year.
That's just conjecture, and I don't believe that, Andy. You know, they, they want.
We won't know, but I can just, that might be my sentiment from sitting on the tour standpoint. You know, "Hey, you're definitely not going to host Latino, we're, we're not open to doing that, we're not coming here for the Canadian." I could, I could potentially see that being a possibility, too, so.
Rick?
You've got to remember also that whether you host both or one, if it's raining out there, your membership isn't going to be playing. But those tournaments play in the rain. And we've had that occasion to happen twice with the Latino. So, just be aware that you're flipping the coin, that if it happens to be a rainy season in January or in April, April showers bring May flowers, and you could have those guys out there playing in the rain, and you won't have your membership out there playing.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, membership play doesn't increase or decrease revenue to begin with anyway. And secondly is, this is a public course, it isn't a member course, and it's up to us to make sure that we make as much money as possible on this community or golf course. And to Tom Costy's point is, that's twenty thousand dollars that we're just going to kiss off, and we got a budget here that blows my mind as far as how much money we're spending this year. And I, I just don't understand the logic behind the whole thing.
Anybody else?
My last comment, I just wrote down, it's, it's our understanding that the, the opening offer from the PGA is forty-six thousand for, for both tournaments, but it's our feeling that that would go up if we negotiate with them.
I think you could push it, I thought you could push it to sixty.
Sure, but that, that, you know, just is our understanding of what the initial offer is.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that is.
From the PGA, so, that's the initial, and then, you know, back.
Well, obviously, they're not going to give you their best price for the get-go, so you know.
Absolutely not. The PGA is very good at negotiating.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Joe, for record, well, I'm not a golfer, but there's a lot of people here that lives here, there is golfers. They do, some of them belong to the association, which I think the numbers has dwindled down since Iowa came here in two thousand and one, from nine hundred, down to about two hundred and fifty or three hundred right now. So there's been a lot of people left. Now, am I understanding that you're negotiating not to have the Latinos play this year? Okay, now.
That's how it's written, how the resolution's written.
Okay, and was that due to damage that they themselves have done to the courses, or what?
Well, it does do some damage, Joe.
I'm sorry?
It does a good bit of damage, and it's time of, type of, time of year, it's not the growing season, but the damage exists.
Okay, is there any way, and this might be something where the attorney may have to answer, that if you do negotiate and have them in here, that they put up a damaged performance bond to cover that, where the district would not be responsible for it?
They won't do that.
Well, if they want to play bad enough, they would do it.
Well, if you, if you put those type of things into negotiation, they will walk. Because that's what it is, Joe, that's typical for any, whether you got there with me and play, or they're playing, you're going to do damage to the course. But their damage is just more because of the type of game and so forth like that, so I understand, but that's what it is.
Okay, from what I'm listening to here, I'm wondering now, here's another one for the attorney. Would they have the right or the liability of being able to file a lawsuit against the district for not accepting them? We just went through one lawsuit here, and I'll be damned if we want to see another one.
No, we're currently not under contract, so for, I think the, the Latino American tour ended in seventeen, correct? That was last, last year for them, and, and we're, we're not currently under contract for any further Canadian tour. So that's basically what we're talking about negotiating, is a new contract. So if no new contract is formed, there's, you know, there's, there's nothing to sue over. So the only way that we could get sued is if we negotiated and signed a contract and then defaulted on it.
Okay, so in other words, if they're denied and whatever, they have no legal course of coming back at the board or the district, then?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to find out, because I'm not a golfer and I don't know that much.
Can we?
Anybody else?
Mark?
I got one more comment.
Well, I'm coming back to the board, so. Okay, back to the board.
Okay. Rather than close the door on any negotiations at all, by passing this, we essentially do eliminate any potential discussions with the tour. We don't have to accept, if they come back with some negotiation and they say, "We'll give you this for this," that's part of the negotiation process. We can say, "Well, you know, we, we like your offer, however, we would prefer now just to entertain the Mackenzie tour." But if we, if we pass this resolution right now, we, we could shut the door on any negotiation for the Mackenzie tour, and I think that's, you know, a valuable piece. We don't have to vote for the Latino tour. Tour if they come in with a negotiation and say, well, we'd like to do this, this, and this. And we can counter it and say, look, we've, we polled the membership again, and this is, and then they can make the decision. If they say they want to walk, they'll end up walking. But right now, we're, we're telling them, we're going to go back to them and say, we'll only entertain the idea of the Mackenzie Tour. And that's my concern there. I'm not a fan, like I said, of having the, with the Latino Tour. That's not my personal opinion. It's the opinion of a lot of people that I've spoken with, a lot of the membership. But I don't want to close the door on the negotiation either.
Larry? But that's basically my concern as well. It's the way it was written, more than the, the after fact. I mean, we're, we're just basically saying no. And there might be an opportunity to do something good here. Anyway, that's, the reason I'm against it so much is the fact the way it was written.
We can always come back and say no at a future date. This is a, you know, a discussion that, you know, we might just come up with, saying, no, this is not a viable solution.
Larry?
I agree with what both of these guys are saying. You know, we just can't turn our back on this thing. I, I realize it came back to us. Nobody likes it. There's a lot of things that, that don't go very good here, but it did come back to us, and I don't think we can just close our back, turn our back on it. There's too many dollars there, and, and we've got an opportunity here to, to make some real money. That's my opinion.
Call for a vote, yes.
I agree that there's, that the money's there. There's no doubt about it. I think these numbers for cost and so forth are wrong. But there's still money to be made. And I don't want to close this door either. I just want to do one thing, though. I think this was written correctly. I think it was, I see where Kurt's coming from, the way it was written. I think it's written correctly, because this tells PGA, real quick, what we're thinking. And you might, if, if we vote this down, it's not because of the way this is written, because I agree with it. I truly agree with it. You've got to let people know where you stand. And if we go back and negotiate with PGA, if we vote this down, come back to it at a later date, I think PGA ought to know where we stand. It's our course. It's all ballpark, and we own the ball. So if you want to come play our game, we want money for it. And there's, there's stipulations in this order would have done that. But I know we're talking about money, and I'd, I'd be willing to wait and negotiate. But I'll tell you what, you better come back nice. And if this ever comes back like this again, there's going to be hell to pay. I can tell you that right now.
I, again, we don't have to vote on it. We can negotiate. But again, I, I am adamant about how this was handled, and I don't like it. And I don't know if it's Billy Casper or if it's Sun and Lake. I don't know. But this cannot keep happening when this board votes on something, whether it's a, whether it's a legal vote or not. Everybody out here knew that this thing was not coming back. And that's the principal thing to me. And now we're held hostage. We can spend 40, $50,000 on something, but God forbid if we turn down $10,000 because our, our membership doesn't like it. I mean, so I'm, I'm all for this, but I, I think we ought to be a little more involved instead of Billy Casper on where the figures start at, and where they end at, and then we decide whether we even want the Latino Tour. And that should be explained to them. So if it's you guys' pleasure, we can, we can once again delay it.
No, let's hold on to the resolution. Let's get it over with.
What's?
We got a resolution out there. I think we got a vote on.
Okay.
Now, can't you table it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you could, yeah, you could table it, I guess, but.
Good as I can do.
Give the right numbers.
Andy, we have no numbers now, right? They didn't come back with us before this, knowing that, see, this is just all confusing to me. Why, they should have come back with an offer.
So our understanding is 46,000?
46,000.
46,000 for, for both, for both tours?
46,000.
That's, that's the initial. That's, that's the starting point.
So it's $3,000 more?
No, I.
Basically 23 for, for each, for each one.
Right.
I was not told.
It's $3,000 more for the Latino. They're adding 3,000 to the Latino. They paid us 23, I think, for the Mackenzie.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
And 20. So it's 43 versus 46, which is only $3,000 more.
That is correct.
Well, I think we ought to take a vote, but I think that's cheap. I think we got to get more money.
Well, we can.
You know, that's, that's the, that's the starting. That's the, that's the floor.
Yeah.
And guys, you know, I, I understand some of you don't want to hear back about it, but we're not saying yes, and we're not saying no. And, you know, I, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not, not entertain negotiating with them, just because we don't want to hear about it again. We can always say no. We're, I don't, I don't think there's an issue in the negotiation process. And when it, you know, when we're talking 10 and $20,000, that's a lot of money to just not want to come back and hear about. So, you know, I, I think we can definitely, there's room to negotiate. And, you know, it may came back that we might have the Canadian and not the Latino. We might have them both. We might not have either one of them. But, you know, I, I think the conversation should be, should be had.
When is that next conversation supposed to take place?
You know, I would imagine it would be a discussion with Jim amongst, amongst you guys, you know, and start figuring out what number we want to come back to them with, you know, for, for both tours or, or for one tour. Maybe it's a couple proposals. Hey, we're willing to host the Canadian, not the PGA, or we're willing to host both of them at X number. You know, maybe you set both of them at 65,000. You know, just throwing a number out there, and you, and you say, or we'll do just the Canadian at this. So, I mean, we can throw a lot of different things on the table at them, but I, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not have that, you know, conversation with the tour.
Well, I would think they'd be planning, you know, for the January Tour right about now, and, and looking at negotiating pretty quickly.
Sure. Yeah, I would think that we'd want to get this process handled here within the next couple of months, you know, going back and forth with them, and then bringing something back to the board and, and having a, you know, a final vote on, on what we're wanting to do. But I, I think that time for the back and forth is, is present, you know, for the negotiation part.
I, I don't mind if it's tabled, so.
Well, we, do we need to give them direction in terms of what we want?
Yeah.
I would say so. I would think so. So, so, okay, I'll throw mine out, and you guys can kick that around. I'm saying $30,000 for one tour, 27,000 apiece for both tours, so that's 54,000. And I also threw in a two-year contract, so we don't have to do this every
year. All the renewal goes up 5% every year. And either party can cancel their contract anytime they want.
I could live with that.
So you guys like that? Not enough? Too much? What do you like?
I'd like a little more.
I would too.
Well, of course, you're getting jacked up, pointing to get your way.
You're jacking it up to the point where they won't.
Come on, you got to be reasonable about it.
Think about it.
But if you give them, if that's the top, if that's the top for us, they'll negotiate that down. You know that.
Nobody says we have to negotiate. Say, this is it. I mean, if you want to negotiate, yeah.
See, I would go, I personally would go higher and let them negotiate it down.
You're asking them to go from 20 to 24,000. 20, 20% increase. That's pretty good.
That's an awful, awful big hike.
Well, okay. I mean, what's your number? What's your number then?
I would, honestly, for the Mackenzie Tour, I don't think that that's way off out of line. And if we could look at these numbers again, I would be thinking in the area of 30,000, 29,000 with a renewable, a two-year contract as well. And I would be looking at the Latino Tour, since it's a tougher time of the year. It impacts our membership a lot. And I know what Rick said and some others, and we certainly can't depend on weather for outside play. That, that could cost us some green fees, whereas we would have a guarantee from the Latino Tour. But I would be looking at the 28,000 range. I think they've had a bargain already.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, 30 and 27.
Oh, okay. 20, I didn't write the number down.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I think that would be a great starting point, if nothing else.
So you'd say 58,000? Kurt'd say 57?
Yeah, but that's no lower. I, I'm a believer you start higher, but.
Anything that comes back in lower, that got, just got to pass the board anyway, I would say.
Well, I think you can be pretty firm. I think this conversation, this meeting is telling them we don't want them here, so we're not going to be in a mood to negotiate too much. So I don't think you need to throw a huge number out there. Get something you want. Live with it. Live or die.
What's your guys' pleasure?
Well, I had a number in my mind of 58,000, okay?
For both?
For both.
Okay.
That was the number I had and originally wrote it down.
How much for one?
28.30.
No, no. If 28, you want 58 for both. How much do you want for just one tour?
Either one.
I wouldn't take the Latino for less than 28,000. That's my, okay? And for a single one, okay? And for the single one, I would be looking at an increase of over the 23,000 they give us today, okay, at least 28,000.
So.
It's a $5,000 increase.
It's 28,000 no matter what, each way. Well, actually, you're saying less. You're saying less than one.
I'm saying, I'm saying 58,000 for the two tours as a package. If they do less than that on the Latino, the 28 that is the bottom line there, that would get thrown out. But we would reduce the $30,000 Mackenzie Tour to 28,000.
Okay.
Don't get it?
Well, usually, if you buy two, it's usually a package is cheaper than one. And you're just the opposite of that.
This isn't usual.
Because what I'm saying is, I'm not going to give them that additional discount on a $325,000 entry fee, okay?
Well, they just, just lock it in, then. You say you want, what, 29 for?
28.30. 58,000.
Okay. 58,000, or if one comes, you just cut it in half.
We'll negotiate it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that number. But I look at it a whole different way. I don't think we're buying anything. We're selling. We're getting money for it.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So that's, that's the reason, the only reason I'd go with even negotiating. I didn't have any numbers, because I wasn't going this way.
Well, that's something that you would agree with, though. Because there's no sense in, you know, having this discussion if that's not something that you feel comfortable with.
I spent 93 years negotiating. I don't know where that goes to. So I, I'm willing, I, I, maybe we shouldn't even leave it on the board. Maybe I'll vote.
Yeah, based on all the conversation I just heard, I think the best thing to do is just call for a vote, and Mr. Kurt Sporn can use the minutes of the meeting as, you know, some negotiating, you know, information. But I don't see any reason to table it, in my opinion.
So we, we could vote this down as a no, but still get a, and it can be brought back again, right?
Absolutely. It's going to be, any contract, you know, it's going to, any, you know, negotiated contracts are going to get brought back for board approval. So voting this down would give Mr. Kurt Sporn the ability to negotiate potentially having both tours.
That might be the best, guys, and that way they know we're serious.
Yeah, I agree.
Does that sound okay?
Let's go.
Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor McCullough?
No.
Supervisor White?
No.
Supervisor Edgell?
No.
President Gilpin?
No.
Don't think he meant it.
I don't think he did either.
None?
She said none.
Petitions and communications.
Yes. We have several communications to the board for you today. The first one I'd like to discuss is a letter to the Board of Supervisors from Mr. and Mrs. Jack and Josephine Wright. They have purchased a vacant lot next to their home at 3320 Monza Drive. The assessments due on this property is about $3,100, and they are asking the district for a discount to only pay assessments at the amount of $1,500.
Based on my review and what's always been done, the district always has the ability to waive penalties, interest, things like that. But once assessments hit the rolls, they're permanent. There's no, any, the ability to, to appeal or dispute a, an assessed, an assessment is through that appeal process. Once the, once it's finalized, there's no method to remove those assessments.
So the 3,000 is just assessments, not penalties, right?
Some of it is penalties. I think $500 maybe. I think I have a paperwork with me.
Can you help me with something here? I had a conversation with Omar and Tanya this week about this. And I had gone on the district, not the district, the county site, to look at these properties, both the house and the vacant lot. And in here, kind of the way the letter is written, they're looking, kind of indicating they haven't purchased the lot, but it looks like they are the owners of the lot.
They are now, yes.
They are the owners of the lot. So my next question would be, and I, we were not aware of that, at least until this week, okay?
That's right.
However, they owe us $3,100 in district taxes or assessments. How did they negotiate a contract without paying off that debt to the district?
Because this was, lands available, correct? These, lands available properties is that the county says, if, if someone hasn't paid their taxes in a certain amount of time, that goes on the lands available list. Then anybody that wants to can go down to the county and purchase it for that, for that amount, the taxes that are due. The county is not interested in collecting anybody else's money. The county wants to collect its money. And so, but because it hasn't completed the eschewement process, it doesn't, none of those other assessments or liens are wiped away, which means the district's assessment lien is still attached. And so the county says, we're going to give you title to the, you know, you have, now have title to the property, but all those liens are still there. So if the district wants to, you know, if they don't pay those assessments, the district could foreclose it and take the property back for itself. But it was not the district's property.
So how is, how is the district notified that somebody has bought a piece of property that has assessments due, even though it's on the lands available? Do we get a report that says, we're, this property has been sold in Sun and Lake, just to let you know, they've paid their taxes? And how do we know?
We don't really get a notification, but it does update. We get our updates through the county website. So as soon as they become the new owner, our database picks up the new owner, and we send out a delinquent bill, and they continue to pick up that tab. They go straight from lands available to the new owner.
Okay, that's right.
But how many changes is on there?
About $550.
I just looked up the property supervisor's website, too, and the assessed value on that lot, it's $10,069. So they paid about $7,000 county taxes plus ours. They're paying about assessed value for it.
If they'd have done their homework on it, that would have showed up in the records as the 3,000, $3,100 that was owed, owed to us on it. So apparently, they didn't go to do their homework. And I don't think we have an obligation to give any of that back, you think?
Absolutely not.
I think everybody agrees with you.
I'm not willing to give up any money.
Okay, we have a petition to the board for a request for a dog park for Sun and
Lake residents. A petition is, says we would ask the Board of Supervisors to strongly consider adding a dog park for all the residents for Sun and Lake use. We received, it looks like approximately about 100, 120 signatures from residents. And this is something that we have talked about internally before. The issue here is, where would we put the dog park? So, and of course, there would be added costs for fencing and some other things. But we, we have discussed it before. So it is a great idea. I mean, but again.
Chanil, can you bring this up a year or so ago?
I do.
Somebody did. Was there ever a figure put what it cost to build a dog park?
Uh, no, because I think it was something that was put, put to the side. We didn't look any further. I know that there's going to be a lot of, you know, we would have to regulate it. We'd have to make sure the dogs are vaccinated. We'd have to do, you know, a keyless entry type situation. type situation. You couldn't just allow dogs to go in there. Most places that have these type of dog parks have some sort of regulatory, and I think for, as far as the district goes, we would want something in place for liability reasons.
So, you're talking fencing and, you're talking considerable amount of money just to build the thing there?
Well...
Well, to fence in, I mean, it's not going to be a considerable amount, but it's also we would have to, I, the way that I see it, we would have to use some sort of system where they would have to register, and not anyone could just go in and out, you know, go in and out of there. But then you also, you know, have the chance of someone just letting somebody in and...
Okay, I'd like to address this. This was brought up to me a while back, and I was going to make some plans with him, talk to Mike about it, and so forth like that. And some people saw me out there measuring stuff in corners and everything else. A dog park is just not a fenced-in area. I've been to cities where you go to those. So, I went over to here, over this corner down here, just to see, lay one out. That's all we did, just to see how big it had to be and different things. And I got the drawings and footage and everything like that, and what needs to be done, things that you mentioned, card entry and so forth. There's a pole there we get to let it from. But this is, the only reason I did that was so I could see it. Now, a lot of people maybe think we're going to build it there. There's problems with that also, dogs, bark. And there's a golf course right there. So, we've got to watch that. But if you move it back up this way, there's plenty of land right out here to build a dog park. I have drawings here for you all as to what we went over. And it's just the idea that you have a dog park, it's going to be 150 by 200, and you divide it in half for large dogs and small dogs. And you have an entry area, because when you take dogs to a dog park, and I found this out by a serious mistake, when you walk up to the gate, all the other dogs come over to greet you. So, you have to have a walk-in area where you take your dog in, let him settle down, and then you enter the large dog, small dog area. Yeah, you need to have key-card situations set up for shots, so forth like that. And you're not going to have 150 people in there at one time, but we do have many people with dogs and so forth. So, I think it's a good idea to at least hand this over to Mike and get it priced, to see what it's going to cost to have it. I had dreams of RV park that at first looked like it was $78,000 until we got the engineers in there. And it changed that view, changed my view considerably, but I haven't given up on it. But I'll show this to you, because this is needed, to put up an eight-foot fence, 770 feet of it. Be plenty big enough, and you're going to have three gates, and one of them's going to be on the, on the card. And then you have things you have to buy for the inside for the dogs to crawl through, jump over, those type of things like that. And so, I have these drawings for you, so we can at least start considering it. See if we can get it priced, as what it would cost, and then come back and make some decisions whether we want to do it or not.
Yeah, I have no problem with it. In fact, it was on my list of things for the budget discussion, add that to our list of things that we want to change. But also, I read in the paper a couple of weeks ago, City of Sebring is actually doing a dog park, so you could get a lot of information from those guys in terms of what you need and how much it costs and everything else. So, my biggest concern is where you're going to put it.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern.
That's mine, too.
I don't have a problem with the park itself.
Because, see, you have to, you have to center locate them, because likely you'd like to walk to them. But that point right down there is just not it. And it's because of the barking and the noise and so forth. This is too close.
This is on Edgewater you're talking about, where you're measuring?
Yeah, on the corner. It's when you get down Edgewater and take the turn, before you take the turn, it's on your right out through there. You're seeing flags in the ground, or so you at least get a vision of how big this thing should be and so forth. But, and I know that probably causes people thinking, what's he up to now?
I've got a report in about five minutes. You're out there.
Yeah, yeah. We had people stopping. We had people stopping. And I know what's going to be, we're going to get out, so let's get it public right now. That is not where the RV park's going.
Yeah. Mark or Larry?
I like the idea. I think it's a great idea.
I think we need to look at it.
I think everybody, you know, I'm in agreement, though, with the question is, where do you put it? And, you know...
I too like the idea, but I just hope, and if Drew gets involved, don't turn this into disaster of Wally's RV park. I mean, okay? Okay, public comment.
I have two more.
Just a minute, Bill.
Oh, go ahead.
There's one more, yeah.
Go ahead, Bill. I mean...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just to reiterate, I wanted to say something on that negotiation with the PGA. Now, you guys, you guys have, you know, you have to accept the survey. The survey was taken and it was no, okay? Was discussed in the golf committee. It was agreed upon, no. Jim was directed to cancel it. I'll observe the contract for this year, okay, or last year. Okay, fine. Now, it resurfaces again. And I, and I think I have a problem with it, because you're having the PGA negotiate with the PGA. Who is setting, I'd like to see the board here give a top number, like Mark's, I think is a little low. I think start at $60,000 for the two. If you want to do that, if they like it, fine. If they don't like it, Wally says, look, this is our ballpark, and they want to play in it. Okay, fine. So, what I'm just saying is that you've got to explain to the members, we're going to give revenue guaranteed, case it rains all the time. We understand that. I always thought a membership is 60% of your operating expense, your budget. And once you get that 60% in the bank, that's good. So, if you can get top dollar for this, this is going to be a good point to argue with the members, because they didn't want it. So, you have to understand, all right? You can justify it. Okay, fine. And I'd like to see you guys come up with a pretty good number, so that you can make some money.
Thank you, Bill. If there's any other public comment, this is about the dog park. We have a public comment at the end of this meeting.
Sorry, Bill.
So, this is for dogs. Dogs only.
Dogs.
Tom Costi, resident. I've been going back and forth to Tampa on a regular basis over the last month or so, and not too far from the city limits of Tampa, there's a place called Rowlett Park, which is quite, quite handy to the University of South Florida and also the Moffett Cancer Center. There's a, there's a large park, park, and a small park, park that the City of Tampa supports. There's no eight-foot fence. There's two or three dog agility devices in there, a little tunnel that they can run through if you want to run them through it, and a ramp that they can go over. There's probably half a dozen benches, and I'm guessing that the small park is probably, oh, something less than an acre, and the large park might be an acre and a half. It's very pretty. There's a sign. There's a swinging gate to get in, and it only opens to the inside. There's no attendance out there. I don't, it's not required that there be any license to get in or any membership pass. You just walk in. And I don't think this needs to be a typical Highlands County government project. If we get carried away, I mean, we could hire a consultant to come in, like the county did, to figure, try to figure out how they can extract more firefighting money out of the residents of the county. They're paying $55,000 to get somebody to tell them how to, how to check costs on something that the county's been doing for I don't know how many years, fighting fires. But at any rate, I just, I don't think it should be that big of an engineering feat to get something like this off the ground. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
You know, Tom's comment made me think, I think Tanglewood has a dog park.
Yes.
So, you can check and see what they're doing. But you're right, you don't need an eight-foot fence. I've never seen a dog park with an eight-foot fence.
They don't have a fence.
The, oh, well, Tanglewood?
Yeah.
I've seen like four-foot, three-foot.
Edgeroy, what kind of liability is the district going to be in, too, with that?
We're going to check into that, Joe.
I'm sorry?
We will check into that.
In other words, we don't know, but you're still wanting to go ahead and try and build...
This was just brought up the first time. We haven't done anything, Joe, so wait till maybe the next meeting or meeting after and ask the questions. We might have an answer.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Now, how come we didn't have public on this one letter there for the lot on, what was it?
Monza.
Monza, yeah.
Go ahead, if you want to comment on that. Go ahead.
Yeah, because I, y'all, y'all got it right on everything in there, because I got ahold of the district or the county. And I also talked with Linda at the org office there. Them people own that lot, like they said. They also bought it on the 24th of April. They paid it up in full. They paid the amount of $6,968.51. Okay, there's 30, 31,480, $31,045.85 that's due on it now. And that's just good up till through the end of this month. Okay? And I missed out there. Did you say that we're not going to do anything with it, or you're going to let them make them pay it?
We're going to make them pay it.
All right. That's what I wanted to make sure of, though, because if they're going to get that, then I want to have charity, too.
Thank you.
But the dog, dog pound itself there, how many of you, you know, have animals that play golf and everything? You go out and golf in the hot sun and everything like that and come back in. You're sure not going to want to go down there and walk them dogs, I know, because you're going to be beat out from that sun the way the weather's coming in already.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
We'll have two more communications.
Hey, David Sherwood, residence. Just for the dog park, just maybe an idea to defer the cost of some of the dog park. Can you hear it? Maybe some of the residents would like to donate a bench in memory of their passed-on dogs or in memory of somebody, like they do in a lot of memorial parks. And you, maybe you have a half a dozen benches in there, and the residents would pay for the benches and installation of the benches at their expense, and then their new dogs can go and they can sit and do whatever. It would defer some of the cost. I don't know. It's just a...
Okay. What's your name again, sir?
David Sherwood.
David Sherwood.
That's a good idea.
Somebody might be contacting you.
You put a little, you put a little plaque on there and give them the bill for it. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good idea, David. Thank you.
Okay.
Real quick, two more petitions I'd like to talk about. There's one from Raymond and Nettie Bodenweiser at 2218 Sunrise Drive. They are, they're making a few comments about the proposed electronic sign that the Sun and Lake community is discussing, the billboard, the electronic billboard. And they are just hoping that the board would reconsider putting up a sign of this magnitude. And then the last petition and communication, Mr. Gustavo Ibanez brought a proposal to the Board of Supervisors at the last meeting. I believe he handed it out during public comment. He was asking, it's a proposal for eight lots, and he, there's $31,000 open to Sun, for the Sun and Lake assessments that would be due on these lots. He was asking Sun and Lake to take $10,000 for those eight. Is there any other comments?
I just don't, I don't think, we're probably all, I didn't ask, but we're probably all in support of what you, how you handled it. Do you guys have any different ideas on that?
No.
Okay.
So, I think, yeah, just run with it the way you're doing it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, is there any public comment on these last two items? Electronic sign and Ibanez.
Joe, another electronic sign there. We used to have a sign somewhere in that area before. It wasn't electronic. It was tore down by mistake, evidently.
Yes.
We know on that.
Okay, now, according to these people here, and I didn't read the paper, so I don't know what they're talking about there outside of, if you're looking at signs going down the road, you're not paying attention to what you're doing on the highways. You don't need to be on the highway for that. Now, the cost of this sign, what's we looking at? $150,000. Okay, and that's going to be one of the rental types, like I was up the road there on the right-hand side by Camper Correll.
It would be put in for us to make money, if we do do it. It's a money-making thing for the...
I see a lot of them around right now that's rotating now and saying, rent me, rent me. Are we going to be in a situation that, that we can't rent it? That's the thing.
Yeah, we might, Joe. We haven't decided yet. And when that comes up, we're talking about it.
Okay. Where's that money coming from to put that sign up?
Don't know yet.
I'm sorry?
Don't know yet. We do not know. We haven't got that far on it.
Well, the thing of it is...
See, these things are brought up, and then we, we will, we will work on them individual. We don't have the answers hardly before. It's, it takes a while.
I understand that, but the thing of it is, you're working on something there that you don't know nothing about, and you're bringing it up to the public where the public wants to know things.
Well, we're, we're, let you know when you ask, and we know.
Well, that's one of the reasons I was here today, not all this other stuff that I've been bouncing around about.
This proposal with the LED sign, I think, is a good idea. I think it'd be cost justified. I think that Joe wasn't here when Kurt gave a detailed account of a proposal and the cost factor, savings and everything else. So, as a member of the community, I think it's a good idea. We need that advertising out there, and I hope it goes through in some manner. Our alternative signs?
Thank you.
I think Ms. Tanya knows about that.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, now we have more public comment.
Sarah's not reporting.
We're going to do a quick staff report from, for finance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're on staff reports on number eight.
I'm sorry, Tanya.
That's okay.
Staff report.
So, we presented today during the consent agenda, the financials as of March 31st. We're halfway through the year, so I've prepared a brief presentation just to give you guys a financial update as well as the public. And we'll talk about a little bit of some of the intro to the budget as well. So, we'll go ahead and start off with the general fund, just showing the revenues versus budget. Overall, you know, we're meeting our goals. We're exceeding 50% halfway through the year. I provided some prior year comparison just to see how we're doing compared to last year. In assessments, it looks like we're trending a little bit behind. We're about $200,000 behind from where we were at March 31st. Second week of April, we sent out some delinquent notices to try and get these collections back up and regain some of that momentum going into the, the end of the year. Overall revenues, we're about 3.1 million, which is 82% of our budget. So, we're pretty, pretty far along. Last year, we're at 3.3 million. So, once again, that correlation between assessments and total revenue is about the same. We're about $200,000 behind as of last year, March 31st. Overall expenditures, each department's under the 50% mark. That's kind of where we, we're target right now. We should spend 50% of our budget as of half the year. All departments are under, so we're trending well. We're, you know, we're being effective. We've pretty much completed all of our capital projects for the general fund. So, we don't want to have any major expenditures outstanding at the moment. Our total expenditures as of right now, as of March 31st, is 1.2 million. Last year, as of March 31st, we're about 1.6 million. So, we spent about $400,000 less this year in comparison to last year. Overall net income, we're about 1.8 in the positive as of March 31st. Last year, we're about 1.6 million. So, we're doing $200,000 better this year than we were as of March 31st last year, which is a good sign. Jumping into, this is just some of the reserves. Really, nothing's gone on in the reserves, except for the golf capital transfer. We've almost completed all of our golf capital transfers as well for the capital projects. The only thing we have outstanding is the golf tee construction, which we'll be bringing at the next, next board meeting. We'll jump into the utility fund. Once again, the utility fund continues to operate well and is financially stable. Total revenues as of March 31st, 1.1 million. Last year, as of March 31st, we're about 1.12. So, we're about $60,000 better this year than we were as of March 31st. So we're about $60,000 better this year than we were as of March 31st last year. Expenses, expenses this year, 965,000. Last year, we're at 980,000, so we spent $30,000 less. So we're making more money, spending less money. Overall net income is better, better this year than next year. Not sure why it's cutting off the bottom line there, but we are doing better than we were last year as of March 31st. Uh, some of our impact fees I wanted to highlight, we budgeted for $12,000. We've seen a lot of development recently, a lot of new construction. Uh, we've exceeded our, our budget, we're 110% of that. Um, we continue, you know, we're predicting that to continue. We've seen a lot of development and growth. So that's a good positive, positive sign going forward. Overall net income, 242,000 for the utility fund as of March 31st. Uh, I wanted to highlight the maintenance building. It's our one capital project fund that's kind of sitting out there. As of right now, we spent 590,000 out of the 1.7 million dollar budget. Um, that leaves us about 1.2 left to spend in completion. I've provided some pictures here if you can see some of the progress that's been going on. There's Mr. Mike Hurley, can't leave him out. All right, so we'll jump into golf. Um, I provided 2016 figures versus 2017 as of March 31st. Um, overall, you can see golf memberships, court fees are up 94,000 in comparison to last year. Uh, pro shop sales are about the same. Food and beverage has got, has gone down 27,000. Overall, uh, total gross revenues has increased 69,000. They're at 2.3 million in total revenues as of March 31st. Um, cost of goods sold has gone down, so they're making more money as of March 31st and spending less on cost of goods sold, which is, is a good sign. And then overall gross margin, you know, we're at 1.9 net income as of March 31st. Uh, some of the expenses, uh, payroll expenses seem to be a little bit higher this year in comparison to last. Uh, seems like they're saving money on operations, general administrative and golf course maintenance. Uh, looks like they're $50,000 below what they were last year. Uh, food and beverage seems to be higher amenities and sales and marketing. So overall, uh, it looks like it washes out. Expenditures are about the same, only a $1,200 difference between the two from last year to this year. Uh, net operating income as of March 31st, 287,000 for the golf fund. Record assess, we haven't, the district has not provided any assessment as of March 31st, so there's nothing to show there. And then just jumping into budget, some of, we've provided some special worksheets and some information going into the budget. I've provided here some of our top priorities that we wanted to address during this year's budget. Uh, drainage being the number one concern, we continue to address drainage throughout the district. Uh, we have some road paving in there this year. Uh, we had the clubhouse kitchen expansion and some other items there. So I wanted to just highlight some of the things that the board and the management has decided are important this year during the budget. I provided a, a chart here to show kind of where our assessments are on an annual basis as of, uh, every year. It looks like we're pretty consistent, you can see the graph really doesn't change much. It stays pretty relatively the same, about 3.5 million. We predict we're gonna be there this year again. So it's pretty consistent, pretty steady, allows us to pretty, to budget well for that because there's not very much fluctuation going on. Uh, inside your budget books, we did provide some graphs and some charts showing what a 3% and a 5% increase would, would look like across the board. Um, if we did go with a 3% increase on assessments, that would generate about $85,000 extra for the district based on collections from 1516. Uh, if we went with a 5%, that would generate about $142,000, uh, extra a year in revenue. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention on that spreadsheet, you can see that, uh, the collection, average collection ratio for vacant property is about 22%. We're collecting about all 12% on unimproved properties and 32% of improved properties, vacant properties. Um, so we're leaving about $2 million on the table in assessed, uh, income just on vacant properties. Uh, this is some of our cash on hand, we've done some projections based on what the budget looks like. Cash on hand's been pretty consistent this year. We expect a little bit of a decrease in the utility fund here this year, you can see that, um, just because of the maintenance building. And then we, we expect that to plateau next year. The utility fund's constantly making money and we, we expect it to recover next year, no problem. Uh, the general fund, it's been trending about a $400, $400,000 decline from prior year reserves every year. Uh, next year, if we do spend the 2, 2 million that we have coming in from prior year reserves, it'll drop us down to about 1.5 million. And then that's based just on this budget. If there's any alterations, that number will change, but it's just a projection going out. Uh, these are, I've provided annual golf transfers over the last couple of years. Um, you can see we've on average transferred about $650,000 to the golf, golf fund. This year, they've recollected 1.1 million. Um, but it kind of gives you a good visual as to how much money the district is sending over to the golf fund. And any questions regarding financials or budgets or the worksheets?
I got a, I got a question, a comment, I guess. When you said assessments, uh, back in April, you sent out delinquent letters?
Yes.
So what's the timing from when you go from delinquent to foreclosure?
Typically, on average, we kind of use a guideline and we use two years as kind of our starting point. One year, we kind of leave them, you know, we give them some time, we send them notices, they'll get the next year's bill. But after two years, we really start pursuing them and start looking, looking a little bit more aggressive to try and go after them or send them a notice.
What's wrong with doing it, delinquent for six months and foreclosure in less than a year?
There's, there's really nothing wrong with it, we just...
The more you let people sit, the, your odds of collection go down dramatically.
Right.
The more pressure you keep on them, your odds go up dramatically.
And we kind of use the county as our, as our backbone or kind of a guideline. Uh, they do do tax, tax deed certificates, which you can purchase, but they don't send it right away for tax deed sale. They give you three years, they put it up for tax deed sale, someone can come buy it at that time. So they have a little bit longer process.
Yeah.
But it's something we can definitely look at or change.
Well, I think you should. And secondly, if you go by the county, you see in the paper, they had a stack of... I couldn't believe it, I was flabbergasted. So I don't think they're a good model to follow myself.
Yeah.
Kurt, I'd like to speak to that in a minute.
All right.
I know you've mentioned that to me many, many times over the years.
Well, I don't get a good answer, that's why I keep bringing it up.
Well, no, that's, no, I, I've given you an answer and the answer is that immediately they become delinquent April 1st, okay?
Correct.
We, we send them a notice saying you are delinquent. Not only do we send them a tax notice, we send them a letter saying, you know, you, you're, you're delinquent on your taxes. We do give them a little time. Foreclosing six months after the delinquency is only one year from the time of billing. I mean, the county does give them three years and I, I felt that, first of all, we don't have a, a foreclosure department. I mean, you've, you've taken on so much recently that, um, it, it is, uh, very cumbersome on our staff to go through the process and we do that regularly now. We do that reg, on a regular basis, but to foreclose six months after delinquency is only one year from the time of billing.
I'm not saying you foreclose, I'm saying write a letter saying you're going to foreclose.
Oh, we do.
Oh, well, our delinquent notice states that on the delinquent notice.
Yeah, but...
Yeah.
Two years later, oh, I guess they're serious, come on. I mean, we got, we got 46 million, well, never mind with that.
And a lot of that's...
We got a lot of money laying there and we guys take this quasi casual attitude toward it. I, I think you gotta beat them on the brow a little bit.
Well, within two months, two to three months, they have a letter in their hand saying that, you know, you're delinquent on your taxes and foreclosure information is within that period.
Apparently, I'm not gonna change any mindsets, I can tell by the answers I'm getting, so.
So I, I think the procedures that we do internally for that is working.
I don't think it is, I don't think it is, that's my point.
It is working. Well, I mean, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't wanna argue.
I personally think it's too soon, uh, you know, you, you have until March 31st to pay. If I send you a foreclosure notice in September and you just forgot, which you could have just forgotten, pay your assessment, that's fine six months later, but you're gonna get a $200 and $10 fee just for going through the assessment.
That's right.
Just for getting that notice and then we're gonna start the foreclosure, which can incur more cost. Nine times out of 10, we don't have problems with residential properties. That's not what we have problems with. Our collection, our collection ratios show that. We're collecting on good properties and properties with homes on them. What we're not collecting on is the vacancies that aren't worth much. And that's where the trouble is, do we want to go through the foreclosure process and spend $2,000 with McClure's office on a property that's worth $3,000?
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying what's wrong with sending, why wait two years to send a letter that you're gonna foreclose? Why can't you send a letter and...
Once again, whether you get, you get an assessment notice in November, you get another one in April. Will another letter help? Not, you already get two notices and they're not paying, what is another notice gonna do? It's really not gonna do much, in my opinion. Um, until they get that demand letter or a fee is when they start to, to move, um, which I understand.
Well, then, if that, if that makes a move, then why wait two years then?
We, basically, I use my judgment. If it's a, it's a property that's worth some money and valued, then we'll go and incur those costs. But I'm not gonna go and incur district costs on something that I don't think we can recoup our cost on. But if we can come up with a better process, that's...
We have a property right now that, he said, he mentioned that we were $200,000 behind. They owe us $166,000.
Correct. And we're going after them.
They know, they know it. And so we are aggressive right now with, with this property because our revenues are down and it's because of the one property. I, I mean, I'll say that publicly, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the case and...
And like I said, we are getting more aggressive. In the past, they've never, they've, we've never gone after vacant properties. This is something we just initiated. So we're becoming more aggressive as the market continues to grow. We're seeing more movement, we're selling vacant lots. It's something that we're progressing towards, but, you know, we, we don't want to spend or absorb more cost than we need to either on things that we don't think are, are worth our time, so. But we can discuss that whenever you're ready.
Foreclosure is expensive, there's no doubt, to go through the process. I mean, they would speak to that too.
Well, credit card companies, they don't give you six months to pay your bill, I'll tell you that. They're slapping fees on you the day after, so.
Yeah. And I think part of the, one of the things, what, what the district's interested in, in collecting is, is, is assessments. We're not interested in collecting, you know, vacant properties. And that's, I, and, and maybe I'll start doing this because I, at least once a week, I get a call from someone, especially once all those notices are going out. I'm getting a call and it's saying, "Can I give my property to the district?" So I don't want to have to keep getting these letters. Because they, they, they're never gonna do anything with the property they know is essentially valueless and they just don't want to, they don't want to be bothered anymore.
Well, at least something's happening anyway.
Yeah. And they are incurring more costs. Every month that it continues to be delinquent, they get a 1% penalty. It's, it's accruing and it still gives them no initiative to pay. So it's, it's not an easy puzzle to solve. You know, we, we make our efforts based on collections that we think are effective. But everything's not gonna work for, across the board for everyone. Some people just don't want to pay, some people do, some people want to let it go, it's, it's the nature of the game.
Well, guess what, next May, we'll have the discussion again.
But for improved properties, we collect 99% of what we bill eventually. Not, not maybe in year one, not maybe in year two, but we collect it. And eventually, the mortgage companies will pay, they don't want to lose their mortgage, so they'll pay the assessment. Um, so just keep that in mind that if, just, you know, we would bill it in year one, we may not collect it in year one, but eventually, we do collect it for improved properties. And these are, these are properties, commercial and residential homes.
And all the, all the foreclosure, all the attorney's fees that get associated with that, you know, if we, if we initiate the foreclosure process, all that gets, all that comes back to the district as well.
I, I guess I wasn't suggesting foreclosing, I was suggesting threatening to foreclose.
Like I said, our, our delinquent notices do say foreclosure. And we do threaten them with that, um, on our delinquents, but...
All right.
I did want to mention that, and that's one of the reasons why I mentioned our, our collection rates on the vacancies, is we're leaving $2 million on the table. It's not, it's not working. You know, we're, we're assessing $2 million and we're not collecting it. If we could collect half of that, a million dollars would be great. But we have to look at that fee structure and our assessments on vacant properties so we can get that collection ratio higher. Um, but that's another conversation for sure. Anything else?
Anything, anybody else for Omar?
Before we, I guess before I turn it over, but I'm gonna let Kurt kind of take the floor after this. Um, he's, he's has his own slide, so.
Oh, I don't want to do that now.
You don't want to do that now? We'll wait?
All right.
Joe, come on up. Are you about done?
When you say it, turn.
See it, fuck.
Wait a minute.
Well, do it, that's fine. No, I just want to bring something up here that happened quite a few years back. Bill, you and Rick, you probably will remember. And this was back when Charlie Bryan was in there. The district went to him and turned these collections over to them to collect it. That lasted for about a year. And that was because of Mr. Savarino being on that board and he didn't like the losing, or paying the county to collect them. Now, whenever he collected those taxes, if you paid your ed-lerm tax and did not pay the assessment, he would not accept it. It has to all be paid at the same time. So this is something that you might want to go back and check into. And we could stop a lot of this stuff from having to go around getting money or whatever. It's just a suggestion now, you know, for you to try.
Thank you, Joe.
Hey, Joe, we, we talked about that a year ago and found out that the tax collector would only take good property, wouldn't take the bad stuff. So there was no advantage for us to do it.
Well, he may have changed his rules. Uh, Eric has done one heck of a job since he got in there with a lot of different things, so. If you talk to Eric, you know, meet with him or whatever, individually or whatever, he may change his mind some way.
Any other staff reports?
My, uh, Virgil, I am a resident and I want to direct it to you, Tanya, because I don't know who the person directly responsible is. A little red light on my septic system went off Sunday. We made a phone call, uh, they were there within an hour, hour and a half later, he's done. He was timely, professional, courteous, and I want to give him an attaboy. It was Robbie, I think is his name. So you need some attaboys to make up for an old crafter once in a while.
Thank you, Virgil, we'll do.
Thank you, Virgil. General counsel?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, I, I checked on Ayala, uh, there was a couple of little things filed, but still no order from the judge. But I, I'm, based on our last conversation, I'm expecting to have some good news hopefully at this, at the next board meeting, we'll see. Um, Tanya and I had a meeting with Ross McBath and Linda Conrad from zoning about, uh, the, the potential changes, uh, looking into the ability to, to change some of the zoning stuff here in the district to prevent, you know, some of these tiny houses that we had been, uh, talking about. Mr. McBath made it sound like it's, you know, it's absolutely doable. Um, one of his concerns was, you know, there, there will be, the, the first step would be to develop what we want to put into place and then the second step would be to, we have to give public notice to all the affected properties. So he did mention that his view of the, of the, of the board accounting commissioners is they, they're, they're not the type of people that like to do stuff piecemeal. They would rather do it all at once, you know, so we, we basically restructure everything. But we did, what he didn't want to do is say, "Okay, we're gonna do this section and then this section and then this section," cut down costs because we're gonna have to give notice to all the affected property owners, uh, if we're changing their zoning. But, uh, it, it is a possibility and if you'd like us to, we can, we could look into, start developing some, some, some changes that gives the, the district some more protection.
Absolutely.
Yes, you can.
Definitely.
Uh, the billboard, we did, I did get an email from the state. They were basically nickel and diming us over $280. I talked to Tanya and she said, you know, just, they didn't want to pay for a $280 apron that was part of the, uh, of the proposal. Uh, and so we should be getting that check. I'm hoping to hear back from the attorney next week about when we can expect our money on, for, for the billboard they tore down, but it should be coming soon.
And how much would that check be?
Right around, just under $10,000, I believe.
$9,000 something.
Yeah, like 97, 9600 or something like that.
General managers report?
I'm not gonna give a full report on projects today, I'd like to do that at the next meeting so we can move on to our, our tour and then on to budget, so.
Unfinished, finished?
None.
New business?
No.
Committee reports?
No committee reports today.
Okay. Public comment? Your last chance, Joe.
We have a problem with Biff and Williams is buying lots and clearing them. Yesterday, Mike gave me a call to check on one in my area down there. And I went down there, it's on Florida Avenue down there. They were clearing a lot. They did not have a permit pulled to be able to clear it. It wasn't cleared through the county. So the social security and people riding around, you people riding around, if you see something like that, the county needs to know. if you see something like that, the county needs to know. They have to have permits to clear lots here in Sunland Lake. And it's Sunland Lake's responsibility to see that it's done. So, anyway, there's been a claim filed against it and I filed it. And the code enforcement's gonna be out. Now, the person that owns that property there, he already threatened me, but I don't care. I'm got broad shoulders as far as I'm concerned. And he took my picture, got my license plate number, and asked me what business it was of mine. Well, being a resident of Sunland Lake, anything that goes on in Sunland Lake is my business. So, I just wanna let you know, they're starting to build and keep an eye out.
Thank you, Joe. Tanya, is there a way that people would know that the permit was got? Do they have to display something somewhere?
It's gotta be displayed.
It's gotta be displayed.
Okay, on a tree or something? In a box?
Plastic box on post.
Thank you.
Tom Costy, resident. The topic I wanna bring up again is the paving of Schumacher. If you check the aerial view and the listing of lots on the tax assessor's website, Sunland Lake on the area of Schumacher, actually from the entire area of Schumacher that's unpaved, going all the way from the corner of the back entrance to Sunland Lake as it exists now, all the way out to the back where it turns to the south. Sunland Lake owns one lot on that road, one lot. I know there's been reference made to all the lots that Sunland Lake owns out there. There are lots that you can see from that edge of the road. However, they front on a road that runs parallel to Schumacher. And that's the back property line. Those lots that Sunland Lake, are in the names of Sunland Lake along Schumacher Road, do not front on Schumacher. However, the opposite side of the road, the entire edge is owned by a family by the name of Payne, which is a pretty prominent name throughout the county. It's the people that own several thousand acres along that road. I don't, I don't have the feeling that, or the understanding that they've been asked to foot any part of the bill for that paving. However, the county is expecting that Sunland Lake's gonna pay 25%. And from the sense of the conversations I've heard from the board so far, it appears as though there's not much objection to that, to us paying that 25%. We only own one lot. Now, if you go back about a quarter of a mile, that first quarter of a mile, those are one acre, approximately one acre, commercial lots that are owned by individuals. They're not Sunland Lake lots. I'm talking about the easternmost lots for about one-third of that distance that the county's considering paving. Those are commercial lots that are valued up in the area of $20,000 a lot by the county tax assessor. And those people are paying their taxes. And I believe they're, I believe they're also paying the Sunland Lake assessments on their lots. But they're not asked to pay anything for that paving, so far, to my understanding. So, I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know that we have formally agreed to pay 25% of that paving cost on Schumacher yet. But I hope that you consider that before you make that final decision. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, discussion to and from the board?
I don't have anything at this time.
I don't have anything this time. But when we get into the budget documents again, each year, that will be, that will be open that we can talk between each other then.
Dave, I got one question. Did you or can you hear from those people on Chen Dutton?
Not yet.
The, I think today is the 11th, 12th. So, it was supposed to close, it was supposed to close yesterday. So, we, the district should be getting its money from that, from that closing.
Okay, so they did accept it and everything's going fine?
Correct.
Very good.
Did we ever get the back taxes or the back assessment collected from the nursing home on Sunrise that they missed somehow in the closing? Did they ever get that paid? It was like $80,000.
It's times two now. When I spoke to the vendor earlier that owed us $160,000, that's the one I'm speaking of. So, they have not paid us yet. We're working on it.
Okay. For the public out there, we're gonna recess for about 30 minutes and go out on the golf course. And then we'll come back here and get into the budget discussions. Okay?
For the next three days. For the next six months.
Just go ahead.
We had one responsive bidder. We received two bidders. The one bidder did not come to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, so automatically, it's non-responsive. So, we have the one bidder from Harstein.
Harstein?
Yes.
And that's a guy from Lake Pleasant, correct?
Correct, yes.
Guy did the curbing.
He's done a lot of work here.
Yeah, he's done a lot of work. That was, we did all the greens.
He needs that to fund his own golf course.
So, the thing here is to actually expand it, this thing to 15 forward, 15 feet forward, 15 feet backwards. And it's also gonna be 15 feet wide. And it'll come up to 18 inches, foot and a half, there's a slope.
What is the existing width of that? We walk it 30 feet.
So, you're gonna make it 15 feet wider yet?
It's 30 yards.
It'll be 15 feet wider.
Wider?
So, we're adding 15 feet that way?
That's why we ended up creating that other one.
Trying to remember the drawing.
But.
It's gonna be wider.
Yeah.
Now, you're saying 15 feet wide. You're not saying wider than this.
No, wider. Adding 15 feet to this.
Yeah, this is number three. I see the front and the back, I see the width.
15 back, 15 forward, 15 to the side.
Okay. Raymond, when you say that, they're gonna bring in dirt and you're gonna turf it?
Then it can show anything to the side.
Yeah, so that guy's saying that's in our bid.
That's not it.
They're gonna put down the turf. You sure it's gonna be 15 feet? The drawing doesn't show that.
It doesn't show that. It just shows that, then this drawing doesn't, it wouldn't match that because that's more than 15 feet wide there.
This one is way more than 15.
No, they're saying.
No, it's not that one. Not that one, Mr. McCullough, it's this one right here.
This is 15 feet from the edge of that, right here.
Not on it that way, Kurt.
No. What he's saying is it's an additional 15 feet in width, I believe. But the drawing doesn't say that. It says in length.
It's gonna go 15, 15, and it's gonna be 15 wide. We shape it the way we want to.
Okay.
Yes, actually is.
This is more than 15 feet.
But Mr. McCullough, it's only gonna be 15 feet. When I come to cut it out, it's only gonna be 15 feet wide.
Where's the 15 feet start, from the curb over?
No, there'll be a slope to it. So, it'll start somewhere inside of here.
And then be 15 feet.
Okay, from right there. It's still got some slopes. So, you start it right in there. Right there you are, that's 15 feet.
Three times six, yeah. Three, six, eighteen.
It'll also be, this will also be reshaped. So, it's, you know, what we're looking at is a rough, a rough picture of it, a rough view. This will be reshaped when we bring in the extra soil. Is the 15 feet wide enough for you to set up a tee here and then move one over here? Side by side? And to, at this type of tee, on this type of hole, yes. On the par three, it wouldn't be.
15 back, 15 up, yeah. It could be smaller than what it is.
It'll be narrower than what it is. And of course, it'll be closer. Always try to choose to be closer to the car path to minimize car traffic.
So, the way this is drawn, it's like one big tee? Or is there actually gonna be low ground here and then a new tee box here?
It'll be a new tee box. This one will not be extended. It'll be a new one being made. And it'll be two feet high.
Either the gold in the back or that's just the size of it.
I got it, I got what you mean. And then it'll be 20 feet wide.
15 back and 30 forward.
Yes, and 20 wide. If they're long enough, sure, I would, I mean.
I mean, you know, I know what that is to mow for, with those things laying out there like that.
If you go. It's shortening them quite a bit, lengthening them.
That's a problem. If you're gonna lengthen too much, you can't do it. Don't have that game.
But anywhere that you put up a marker, it's gonna help for mowing. Whether it's on a tee surface or out in the rough. You gotta move them to mow anyway.
Yeah. But I, and I watch those things all the time. They're all in pretty good spots, flat.
Well, the type of player also that plays from there, doesn't really take a whole lot of divots.
Yeah, I can see that too. Really, there's tees that I worry about, the divots. The bucket's still right at the end, right there, is partially. They have to trip over to leave the tee, they're filled with divots more often. But I moved one too, the other night, I was playing by myself. Went out there and I don't know why they're doing that. Maybe they hit some mini balls in the water, just makes them too bad, they just walk off. But you love a lot of different sort of field up there. But the bucket was sitting there. But I think they just get upset, take off.
Just dump the bucket upside down or somebody will surely spread it out after you dump it one big ball.
Problem with that is when the mower comes through there, it throws out the blades.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of people don't realize, you know, that when you put that sand in, you put it in step on it, so it's down to ground level, grass level, ground level. The grass will go back up to grass level. But I've seen piles, I've seen.
Oh, go ahead, they just pile it, it used to. And the soil's always gonna, it's always gonna settle.
Sure.
Whether it just runs off or gets under.
Yeah. We ready, what's next?
75 feet right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. The size, the length is not changing.
That's not changing. The elevation is the only thing that's gonna change here.
75 in length.
I'd almost say if you go there to that cut grass, it's almost 30 feet up.
Probably. Actually, it's over to here if you went 30 feet. Oh, no, that was 45. That was 45, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's probably the same width.
You should've stopped at 10. When you went to 15, you screwed yourself.
Yeah, that's probably the exact, length and width is exactly the same, I think. Only raised.
Back behind Karen, there's what she did.
Oh, yeah.
She didn't know, obviously, I said, he ain't gonna buy her.
He didn't know that she was a.
You're getting at it.
Only forward.
Yeah, it'll go forward and it'll be a tiered tee.
Really huge tee.
But it'll be a tiered tee. So, this area here will be good anyway because it'll be rough.
So, you're gonna have a tiered tee this here and then down there, two-foot level?
Yeah.
But it will be nothing in between? Are you gonna grade it? There won't be any use here?
No, no, it'll get graded. It'll get graded, but it will not be.
You can't see anything there.
No.
Because it'll be.
Right.
So, you're gonna see different colors here, red, blue, yep, white, or gold. This is gold. So, this one, they're gonna move this, this four.
There's somebody who's playing. And you look around and you'll notice when the grass is gonna turn.
Gold, and there's your red. Tees, red tees, white. All coming and getting. What happens is when you use these a lot, you see how the grass gets all, you know, because your club, when you hit it, the grass. And then what they try to do is grow, grow this out, you know, they kinda try to transition, yeah. That makes sense, you have to move them around.
When you do see this, this is a recovery sign of nematodes.
Yeah.
They love it dry, they don't like it wet.
They don't?
Yeah. How far on front there, Mark?
Well, if they say 50 feet forward.
No, I'm assuming they're gonna start it.
You start it right here, right here because you're gonna be level.
About 50 feet.
So, it's 50 feet forward, 45 by 20. So, it's 45 feet long, it'll be 40 feet wide.
And we see the step down from here, same level?
It's, it'll be the same level because it's up. Okay, are you gonna start it right here or you're gonna go up, no, 50 feet? You're gonna go up 50 feet and then you're gonna start it. Yeah, where Mr. Camp is, is where. That'll be the beginning of it.
This is the beginning of the tee?
Yes. If I read this right, it says add new red tee 50 feet forward.
And then it'll be 60 by 20?
Yeah. Okay?
Roughly 50 feet forward. But this doesn't change, it stays exactly the same?
No, this one stays up there. Because originally, that's this one, this is another one that originally they spoke about, moving and reclining the car back. But nobody wants to.
So, that's hoping for the red up there?
Yes. Now, that one, you know, may entertain bringing the green marker solution back to it. I mean, it's gonna go 45 feet forward. It's not gonna reach there, but it may, it may be able to host it.
You're gonna move women's tees back. Don't do it while I'm standing there.
Well, you know what? I just said women, we're not doing anything.
I wonder why?
So, you're coming over 10 feet this way.
Going forward 10 feet.
No, it's going up here 10 feet.
Oh, widen forward 10 feet.
Here, look at the drawing. Says 10 feet this way, 20, 30 feet that way.
Yes, it does. Now, see, it doesn't explain the same thing.
I don't know, 10 feet, you're gonna be right here, almost.
You would think.
So, why, what purpose to that?
I'm not sure. First of all, I'm not sure why wider. Because it's, to me, it's wider. Yes. And you're gonna go forward with it then, how far?
20 to 30 feet, 20 by 30.
So, you're gonna go halfway to the greens?
Oh, but they're adding out here.
Yeah. It's gonna go forward from this point though, not, yeah, I understand, not that.
Yeah, but this here doesn't make any sense to me.
It doesn't, it certainly, when you see the wording, you know, that doesn't. So, it's showing here, it's showing here that it will be a tiered tee. So, they're talking about that tee there.
Yeah.
Okay. But then, yeah, that's why, that's why, that's why Mr. McCullough, it shows.
It does say widen forward tee by 10 feet.
That one. So, it does. We're gonna go 10 feet that way and then we're gonna go 20, 30 feet forward. And it'll be 30 feet from the red tee. Right in here, someplace, isn't it?
That words are gonna eliminate that tee box.
This way, so.
Is he on this side of the car?
Is that one, but it would, they're talking about another one.
You're looking at the wrong, this is great.
Oh, this is great. I thought that was 13.
No, it's three. You wanna be looking at that actually.
Because there's a question mark on one of the tees here on this hole. It may not necessarily be needed.
I don't even know, why would you need it? Why would you wanna move the gold tee over here from here?
I think this is-
Yeah, I got that.
Right there.
I mean, you're paying money doing that.
This one-
Unless you wanna lengthen it for some reason, is that what you're gonna find it is? Are you, is this one gonna get eliminated then?
One of them has a question mark, and it's the one that has, that's on the other side, oh, this one didn't take the whole picture.
You told me the other day, it's gonna be on this side of the cart path.
Well, that's what the drawing showed.
The drawing chose that. And that was just to relieve that tee.
And it's, it's over an extra cart path, just almost behind Mark there someplace.
That was, yeah. Did you see where the cement's new over there, coming over the edge, that would, that looked like something was, he was talking.
That's all gonna be red over there then.
It'll be all red, and this will be a new gold tee.
Yeah.
It'll be on this side.
It's gonna be the new gold tee, right side of the cart path, opposite of the pine, so it'll be over on this side.
It'll be further back going to the drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Back more by the trees.
Yeah. It'll be behind that one.
Right about where he's at, right there.
Yeah.
It'll be up against that cart path.
Yeah.
That's the new gold tee, and then women's.
Alright.
Believe this is the only totaling project, because it didn't come in, at the thirty thousand dollars allocated, that he said, I'm not gonna make a decision on sixteen, it's up to you guys.
Yeah.
That's what kind of the email said.
If they didn't get the email, we probably shouldn't go out until Jim show them.
No, I, we got the email.
I got the email.
But I mean, if you wanna go-
What are they talking about putting, moving, does anybody know?
Just linking it to what he said in the email.
Okay, no. I thought they were gonna move it forward, so that women could hit over the pine. Oh, that's the wrong one.
Yeah, that's seventeen.
Move it off the left of the tree that come into play. It was not part of the original project out of it.
Here's part of the reason, on mine, in my picture, it's showing a double tee up here, set of one. And so, Jim said, he don't think we need that tee, and I, I agree with him, and so that enabled sixteen to come into play, because this is already figured in the price.
Yeah.
Oh, the double tee.
So you want to drop over sixteen?
Yeah, that's supposed to be.
You're on the way up, we're coming, on the way back down.
Yeah, you really penalized somebody here.
And some of them is just gonna be necessity, cut, and some of these is gonna be these bigger branches, to allow better sunlight, and some of these, we're just gonna thin them out, so that we get sunlight down, down to the turf area, so we can maintain turf there.
Very much needed. Yeah, cause you can be in the fairway and be blocked out.
You're blocked.
Making a, a new tee, so that's the reason that one was made, so that people would be able to use it, and get a feel for what adding a tee here, a yellow tee, would be, and that's where it would be added.
So Mikey, what do you think? You're the one that usually, yeah.
Well, it's just like Jim said in his email, that this is where people over there are loving it, there, there are some, cause I've played golf with them already, they love it, cause they hit their, they can't hit their driver here, it's the guys that shouldn't be on the gold tees to begin with, love that tee. Well, that's, that's the problem, and, and I, I went from, uh, I played it three times, I've hit, uh, into the green, my four hybrid and two seven woods, and I used, this used to be the only hole I could hit an iron, which was a five iron. I mean, I don't care, but that, if you move it over there, you're doing nothing but helping the guys that shouldn't be hitting there to begin with.
Oh, you're saying it's too long for you?
Well, it's too long for the normal hole player.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Well, if you move it up here-
But Jim said here is where he wanted it.
And I, I was gonna say, and I'm sure that, that's open for discussion, that's, that's only coming to play now, because of the fact that there's an extra tee there, that may not be needed, so, it's not accent stone.
Yeah, if it's moved up here, then long hitters on the gold, that shouldn't be on the gold, would have to work the ball, get it in the fairway, back there, they can unload, you have to work it from up here.
Well, the thing, one of the things, I don't know if anybody's caught or not, but when we're adding to these tees, a good chunk of these tees, we're adding to the front of it, so we're gonna shrink the gold, the length of the gold thing. We're shortening the whole damn course, guys, uh, Ron Gar, the first thing he come out with, he wanted to lengthen it by two hundred yards, and now we're shortening it.
No, he wanted to shorten the, the white tees, is what he did, and that's why we stirred him away from that, that was his first initial thing.
He also wanted the yellows longer.
He wanted to shorten the white tees, that's-
So what's the other alternative, leave it here, or?
Make this bigger, is what Jim said in the email.
Okay. Well, I think it's good to keep the trees into play to some degree.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever y'all decide, you can do a change tomorrow, okay? If it's decided to, to actually do a change here, we can do a change order.
Okay.
Uh, you know, once we award the contract, so, if it's decided.
Okay.
It's not a board, so.
But it would be added to, to the back of it, mostly some, and then to the front a little, but, cause it's back, a little bit back, a little bit back. We're gonna recess till one-thirty. We just turn it over to you, don't we now?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Today, we'd like to start with the general fund budget discussions. We've, you have your, everyone has their notebooks today, we've organized it into tabs for the different departments, and then, uh, we also, we'll talk about the capital costs as we go along. I'd like to let Omar kinda start with, um, some of the initial, initial parts of the budget, and, uh, he's all provided, he's provided to you a summary of the proposed budget changes, and I'll just allow him to start, and we'll just, you know, feel free to ask questions as we go along, we'll just go page by page.
So we're at page, we're gonna start?
We're gonna start, um, I believe-
I think we should just go to the general fund revenues, I provided a memo at the beginning, that kinda, we'll talk about some of the major highlights, and you guys can, if you have any, you know, questions on details, line items that I don't discuss, then you can bring them up, and we'll talk about them.
So we're going-
I think we'll just go tab by tab, um, we've constructed this budget a little bit different, each tab-
That page you're talking about, you wanna start on?
No, that's a summary, but I think, you wanna start on the summary?
If you have any, you have some questions on the summary?
Not that page, I'm just trying to get on the right page.
No, no, no.
Right after number one.
Yes, first revenue.
After red, red tab.
I know, I'm, I'm looking to see if I got any-
Admin, take right before admin.
Well, actually, I'd like to go, um, I'd start, I'd like to start on the Sunland Lake Sebring Improvement District Assessment Rates, that page. Um, it's, it's in the red, the red tab someplace.
It's right in the middle, there's, it's the actual rates, assessment rates, it's a page that looks like this. It's got three columns.
And no assessment, revenue collection, or rates?
Rates, and then it shows three percent increase and five percent increase.
Alright. The only thing I'd like to bring up there is the unimproved lot, the rate is two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents, the last time I checked, uh, back in January, people were paying about fifteen percent, which, um, amounted to five-hundred-and-sixty-five properties out of thirty-eight ninety-two, that are actually up there in that northern area, and I'm suggesting that we take that rate and reduce it by fifty dollars a year over the next four years, to eventually get it down to a reasonable rate, I mean, this is basically land that's useless, and, for people to pay three-hundred bucks, I, so, which would cost us, based on my calculation, about twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue. Assuming everybody keeps paying, they're just gonna pay two-forty-four this first year, instead of two-ninety-four, so I'm just suggesting that we think about taking that rate down fifty bucks.
We can do that, and just do it, I mean, is that, is it that simple?
We can approve whatever rate structure we see fit, okay? But, but, okay.
Okay, but, there's a but.
You know, it, it's been advised to us that if we, you know, change, change our rate structure on one, you know, the, if we just did a three percent across the board, or decrease, increase, that, that's been recommended before, but when, when we go and change just certain categories, um, you know, I know John McClure, David Shoemaker, has talked to me a lot about that in the past, um, we, we can adopt whatever rate structure we see fit, okay? But, um, if, if we reduce this rate for the unimproved lots, we should substantiate, you know, why, and you just, you just had a great reason, that's, that's another reason, is these are areas of the district, they're worthless, well, I say they're worthless, there's no roads-
Minimal value.
Minimal value.
And the other thing is, they're not getting the same service and benefits that we get here.
I agree one-hundred percent.
Because there's no roads there, so there's no road maintenance, there's nothing going on up there.
So putting that in writing to substantiate that decrease would definitely be recommended.
Well, the reason I ask is, I think you and I talked about it, you said that it was gonna cost, that we have to do that, do, we have to do that thing that costs us over twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Oh, the study, you mean the seventeen thousand dollar proposal?
Do we have, can we get around that, or is that, if we do this, we have to do it?
I would still like to be able to hire a consultant, to, to discuss any, any rate changes, I mean, keeping the same methodology, I think you all have directed us to try to work on the methodology we have, and we will do that, um, but, we will be, we'll be talking to Stephen McDonnell again, and bringing back a proposal to the board, very soon, I mean, we really, we really wanna do this.
We have a phone call set for this afternoon for Stephen.
That was my only drawback, though, is to spend seventeen thousand dollars just to-
And then nothing happened.
And there's nothing, you know, and I understand what you're saying, but that's, that's where I had-
Well, based on what we heard last time Stephen was here, I think Canyon and I discussed it for a while, and I think, just hearing board comments, we'd like to move forward, but we wanna make sure that we're doing something that's not gonna cause us any legal problems going forward, and I think by reducing one category, as Canyon mentioned, it could cause us some legal concerns, as far as being sued, because we're, we're changing just that one category, and we're not saying there's no benefit decrease, you're just reducing it because you think that's an adequate price, there's really no correlation between the two, um, so we wanna keep going forward with the same methodology, but we wanna come up with actual benefit values, so, what our new analysis would be for an unimproved lot, an improved lot, a single family, and we go across the board each one, using the same methodology, but we've come up with new rates across the board based on benefits.
And we agree one-hundred percent, vacant lots, not on a road, do not receive the same benefit as a residential property, or an improved lot.
So we got a reason right there.
So, yeah, why do we, I understand.
Well, right now, the methodology states, you're getting certain benefits for two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, you're saying, you're still getting that same amount of benefits, but I'm gonna charge you two-twenty-five, so you've reduced the price, but you haven't changed any benefits, the benefits on the methodology, there's certain benefits that you're receiving, admin, finance, code, whether there's a road there or not, you're getting benefits, you haven't reduced any of the benefits to reduce the price.
And you're saying seventeen thousand dollars are protected?
I don't know if it's seventeen thousand, we can reach out to other consultants, we think that's gonna be the cheapest route, because they've worked here before, and they've done the background, and they know the information, if we go to another consultant, it could be that they charge us twenty-five thousand, because they have to go through all the background and story, we don't know, but we can go down that road and find out, but that's just our opinion.
Yeah, we could contact Bert.
Well, between now and the next meeting, which will be two weeks, I think you could get a definite decision from our lawyers, or, as to what problems reducing one rate would cause.
Well, I can tell you, leaving it as it is, is probably worse than not doing anything. I mean, it's just, I mean, we've-
Is it, you're talking forty dollars a year for four straight years, is that correct?
About fifty dollars, it's just an example. Get it down to less than a hundred bucks, that's really what it should be.
It'd be nice to take that down even faster, but-
Well, then you're losing-
Then you're just pushing that envelope even more.
Well, you're also losing more money, you're losing about twenty grand a year, so.
I can't see any reason to incorporate this into an increase at all, or three or five percent, if you're saying we're gonna do this across the board as an increase, you're increasing an unimproved lot, which I think, at least you and I, Kurt, I think, we should be going down on it, and, and looking at this, we get eleven-point-eight-four percent collection rate on that, if I'm, if I'm reading your numbers correctly, you increase it, we're probably gonna get less, if we decrease it, there's a high probability, we might actually collect percentage-wise, I don't know total dollar revenue, if we decrease it, we might be able to get some of those people to start paying.
And we, we agree, we feel the same way.
I think that, that the adverse side of that would be, they may pay this year's, but what about the ones that didn't pay in the past?
Well, they won't pay.
But they're not paying now, Walt.
That's what I'm saying.
They're not paying now, if we can at least get them to pay something, that would be helpful.
My example would be, I didn't pay that last year, cause it's unimproved, I'm not gonna pay it, now I get a bill from you, says it's fifty dollars less, what are you gonna do about last year, the year before, year before, what I didn't pay? You got a new collection rate of eighty-nine percent.
Well, you gotta pay whatever rate was in effect at the time, so we're not gonna, if you're saying we're gonna reduce the rates going back?
No, no, no.
Can't, can't do that.
You can't go retroactive.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
No, you're saying, what, what do we say to them?
They're still not gonna pay, because they, they've already been in the rears, and they, they also got delinquency on it.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, we've gotten eighty-nine percent of the people that aren't paying, right?
Correct.
And you think they're gonna start paying now?
No, and our concern really isn't for those that aren't paying, but the county owns thirteen-hundred lots, and how are they gonna sell them, or are they gonna get investors who are gonna wanna pay two-ninety-five, probably not, well, someone maybe invest and pay a hundred dollars a year, maybe, but you gotta make it reasonable for them to, to invest and acquire a piece of property, that may take twenty years to develop.
No, I, I can buy that, I can buy that, what I'm saying is, and the twelve percent of the people are gonna probably continue to pay this rate.
Correct.
Cause the collection rate you got, but the, but the other eighty-nine percent of the, are those people, or are those that?
No, well, it's county owns most of it.
That's a county-owned property, correct?
The county owns a thousand, according to my notes, a thousand ninety, a thousand thirty lots, we own nine-
The county's a separate line item, county, at the bottom, you can see twelve forty-six.
Oh, I said that wrong.
That's what I'm saying.
I said that wrong.
Thirty-seven nineteen is all owners, individual owners.
I said that wrong.
Yeah.
Sunland Lake owns a thousand of the three-thousand-eight-hundred lots.
Right.
So, no, we're not gonna pay anymore.
So how many, how many people are we affecting, are actually are paying now, and this will help them out?
Well, you can subtract, there's, there's five-hundred-and-sixty-five people playing, paying right now out of thirty-nine-hundred lots.
So it's five-hundred-and-sixty-nine people.
So you're gonna help all five-hundred-and-sixty-five people.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I meant.
And I think, and I think if you, when you send out the-
Twenty-two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's what it's roughly gonna cost, so, my point is, if you, when you send out the assessment notices this year, have a letter that says, this year it's two-ninety, or two-forty-four, then, you know, show them where you're progressively taking it down, and if you show that to the people that aren't paying, yeah, maybe you pick up one or two or ten, I don't know, but I just, I think, based on what, what the service is, and what they're getting for the two-ninety-four, is no comparison to the other lots at four-ninety-nine, I mean, it's, it's, it's like residential property, the farmland kinda thing, it's just, to me, it's, it's just showing good faith, I guess, that we're trying to do the right thing, and nothing else.
Yeah, if I could go along with that, I'm just saying, I don't think it's gonna pick anybody up.
No, I don't think so either.
If I had to pay, then my mother's gonna start paying them.
I don't think so either.
That's just fifty dollars less than I owe you.
The county doesn't own any lots, and the unimproved lot category, they own all the lots, they're all on a road, and all their lots are run to drainage.
Well, also, you said eleven percent, did you just do that number just now, eleven last week or whatever?
Yeah.
Cause I did this calculation back in December, and it was at fifteen percent, so the rate's going down now as it is anyway.
Correct.
So, the point is, I guess, we can show good faith, and eventually, that fifteen percent, or that five-sixty-five's gonna go to zero anyway, so, you're gonna end up losing the money sooner or later, so, why not do it slowly now, and?
Well, I think everybody agrees with that, Kurt, but it's, it's, spending an additional seventeen thousand dollars for us to do it, that's-
A consultant, they, they provide us the methodology which supports the benefit, so if there's, if there's less benefit, I know, but if there's less benefit, just like Kurt said, we all agree, there's less benefit for a property that's not even on a road, we, we want that substantiation that says that.
Well, then, then I wouldn't do it, I mean, now you're talking forty thousand bucks we're gonna lose.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's amazing.
That's my only question is-
I know it's the-
Catch twenty-two, because-
The other side of that, look at the-
It's just a risk, it's just a risk.
Look at the office stuff down through there, uh, they're basically the same rate as somebody just sitting on the golf course.
Yeah, if you want-
With a business.
Yeah, if you wanna hire a consultant, I'd have the consultant tell me, is my commercial property the right rate? If you can-
That's exactly what we were gonna go and work with. That's exactly what we were gonna go and work with, Stephen McDonnell.
That's a whole different ballgame then.
Because we, we do need to address the commercials, absolutely we do.
They're way too cheap.
It's not just residential, it's the commercial that concerns me just as much. Yeah.
There you go. 20%.
All right. Well, I don't know where we go from here.
I don't know.
I guess what you can do is put the 17 grand in the next budget review, and then we'll decide to take it out later if we want to. Could be my recommendation. I mean, this is no cast-in-stone process at this point, anyway.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
And are we gonna talk about a rate increase now or later, or while we're on this page, or what are we doing?
We'll get there, won't we, if we just...
Pleasure of the board, I mean, if you wanna, we'd like to talk about revenues first, so this is, this is first.
Okay. Go back to the beginning.
All right.
20%, right behind that rate sheet is the worksheets. It shows how much additional revenue we estimate we'll collect at the 3%, 5%. We've shown them out, you know, it's $10 difference and $15 on some, so it's really at the board's discretion what they'd like to do at that point.
Okay.
With the increase. Keep going.
Yep, next page.
So we'll go over to the revenues, overall revenue.
Oh, wait a minute, you got, you got a proposed capital plan here. You wanna talk about that, or you wanna talk about that later on?
So, yeah, we constructed this budget a little bit different. Every tab that we talk about, every department, we'll have the capital project worksheets behind, within that department. So when we get to roads, we'll talk about our capital projects. When we get to recreation, we'll talk about it. And everything that's listed here will be talked with detail with a worksheet, so you guys can get the visual and the numbers all at the same time while we're looking at the numbers.
All right. Even though you're gonna do that, while we got a summary page here on the capital plan on the second page, you got a cooker-smoker in there for $12,000 and a double convection oven for $17,000, that's $29,000. Why would we do that if we're gonna redo the kitchen? Why would we spend money on that?
That worksheet's a golf fund. It's just tying that $60,54,000 is what the district will pay in golf capital. Jim will have worksheets at the next budget workshop, giving explanations on why he's requesting those items and the detail behind it. We just wanted you to see how our number ties to the golf fund.
That's why I don't like separating these two. I mean, they're all tied together.
That's a good point, Kurt. I mean, why are we gonna go down the road of buying new equipment when we're already looking into the kitchen? Is it, it's gonna cost, what, $500 plus thousand just for all the equipment? So, we're gonna, we'll let Jim discuss that.
Well, when Jim comes, this 100 golf cart lease with trade, I'm told it's not a lease, it's a buyout.
It's not a lease, I'm sorry.
It's a purchase, so we know that for sure?
It's a purchase, and it, yes, it's a typo, it's not a lease.
Okay.
So he, if we buy new golf carts and we trade in the ones we have, purchase price will be approximately $230,000. This is with Easy Go. So that is a typo.
Okay.
We're not talking specifically about golf until...
Well, if you have some questions, I can definitely try to answer those or we can have them answered for you prior to the next meeting.
Will they have some rough mowers in here?
Yes.
Are you familiar with?
Two, two of them.
At roughly $63,000 each?
Yes.
Now, I don't, I don't claim to know a lot about the mowers, and since I can't see the specific models and things, but we already purchased a number of those in 2015, '16 budget at a fraction of that cost. Are they different?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be replaced.
Well, it said, it said rough mowers, and it said $13,000, and then this says $63,000, so I'm just trying to understand, were the $63,000 versus a $13,000? Obviously, you guys are familiar with that.
And that's $63,000 each.
Right.
$63 each is what Jim's proposing, so...
All I'm saying is, the word, there's no detail behind here, so I suppose I'll have to wait, because they're saying it's a $63,000 mower, when they purchased rough mowers before, they were $13,000 each.
I'm just trying to go in order.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait for the detail, but I think the last purchase that we did with the $13,000 mowers were for the fairways and the greens, and I'm assuming these are more heavy-duty for the rough. I'm just assuming I'm not a golf pro or superintendent, but...
I don't know either, and that's why I asked the question.
We haven't seen the capital sheets yet to be able to explain that, so...
We can't talk about golf at all today, I suppose.
I guess not, no. Okay.
I mean, we can.
Are we gonna put this in some type of order?
Yeah.
Hell, I don't even worry, I have any idea where you're at.
Right here.
We're not in order.
The page before the administrative tab is, I think...
Go back and start from the beginning.
Let's start from the beginning, yeah. I think we jumped into 3% and 5% assessment rate increases. Maybe we better go page by page from the beginning.
Just tell us where you're starting.
Yeah, that's all we need.
Tab one.
Tab one.
Red.
There you go.
All right.
That's the red tab.
So you're at the memo.
Yes, yes.
Gives you a brief explanation of all the major, major changes.
Okay.
Correct.
Got that.
Get packed, and we'll talk about them as we go along. Next one is the budget summary, which shows all the, all the funds that we're proposing for this year.
All right.
We have the general fund, utility golf, and we have two capital project funds established for this year, which is one for the RV park and one for the clubhouse kitchen. Total budget, $15,48,900.
And you lost me already, where are you?
Right after the memo.
It's a budget summary, all funds.
The general budget.
Right after the memo.
So we're gonna come up later to talk specifically about these things.
Correct.
That's what I, that's how I read it last night.
Okay, it's fine.
Then we have the long-term strategic planning, where you see the three tiers. That's the next page. Tier one, tier two, tier three.
Which I like.
Now, these are the ones that we, you all sent out, we voted and put them in a specific order.
Yes.
So this kinda dictates what our priorities were inside the budget. We made sure we got drainage in there, roads, the clubhouses.
Right. And you're, we're gonna try to complete tier one in this fiscal year, or tier one and two, or?
We picked select few, like...
Select few out of tier one?
Out of tier one.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
But cash on hand and projections?
That was the worksheet that I discussed during the presentation.
That, that number that you were looking at on 2018, that's if we did all the proposed projects, we would drop...
Inside this budget.
We would drop down to 1.9.
Correct.
Where we're setting to 3.6 now.
Yep.
3.7.
3.8.
3.8.
Yeah.
Close enough. That's a couple hundred thousand.
Okay.
Got it.
Next, we got the golf fund transfers.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the chart that we discussed.
This is subsidy and this is capital. So over the years, this gives you an idea of what the general fund assessments have paid for relation, in relation to golf. So each, for each year, this includes subsidy and capital costs.
Right.
So, so that number of 1.1 million versus last year's $430,000 incorporates all the capital equipment and golf carts and everything else?
All that he wants.
Okay, just wanna make sure. You guys have been through this quite a time.
It's just a visual, sir. This chart is just a visual, sir.
Okay.
And you have the assessments. Just some info there. The assessment revenue collection start.
Yep.
Any questions on that one?
No.
You got the rates?
Yep.
3%, 5% worksheets.
Got it.
A little...
Capital project summary.
I wanna talk about that.
Capital projects, okay.
All right. Special events and weddings and all that kinda stuff are very important to the clubhouse. In fact, I did some checking, and last year in 2016, we did $60,000 in wedding revenue. We obviously aren't the only game in town, there's other people competing for that business, and my intention here is to create a venue, if you will, that would want people to do business with us versus our competition. And if you can put up my first slide here, this is a wedding that took place sometime previous at our clubhouse, and as you can see, they're just basically standing on a grass platform, and this is the wedding picture that goes into their album. Go to the next slide, please. My opinion, if we would build a gazebo or pergola or a pavilion in the back where they hold these weddings, that just adds another benefit to, well, this thing is cycling through here, but anyway, it just adds another benefit to our ability to attract more business. And I've done some investigation in terms of building, the next slide, building a gazebo like that with it being raised up, so you get a better view for the people attending the wedding. Also, you get a better photo of the lake behind it, as you can see the picture on the bottom there that just went away again. Can you bring it back, or is it just gonna keep cycling?
It's gonna keep cycling.
Okay. So anyway, so I've done some checking, and I think for about $15,000, we can build one heck of a nice focal point for weddings, and I think I would increase our business. So I would like to add something like that to our, our capital improvement fund, just to make us have a better presentation, better for everybody, that's all.
Is that, is that a gazebo, that's not a gazebo that you were talking about, 15, 16,000?
Yeah, gazebo, and a good size.
That's a pergola.
Yeah. Pergola is, is an open, open air. There's three different types. Gazebo is basically what you saw. A pergola is like a grapevine arbor type thing, and a pavilion is a open air with posts, but it has a solid roof on it.
Yep.
And the one I liked on the bottom there was the fact that it's bigger, so when there's not a wedding being held there, people can go to the clubhouse, get a drink, and go out there and sit by the lake and, you know, have a conversation. So I think it would be used year-round. This particular company that I went looking for pricing, they, first of all, they'll do custom, you can do anything you want if you got the money. But also, they will do, do it in wood or they'll do it in vinyl. So obviously, if it's a wedding venue, you're gonna want it in white, so I would think the thing would be all done in white. I like the gazebo myself. Tenio likes the pergola, which would be similar to that, because people can decorate it, hang stuff on it, and, but I just think the, the setting for a gazebo is just better-looking and more impressive than, would, nothing else create better wedding photos if nothing else.
Well, I think another way to look at it, too, is we just put a roof on because we want to match what the others are.
Right.
And we already have one across the lake.
And, and this particular company will do any, if you want shingles, or if you want metal, or if you want wood shakes, they don't care, that's all, you know, whatever you wanna pay for.
That's pretty short money. That's why I asked you. That's, that's pretty inexpensive. I don't, I know that, and I'm not questioning your numbers, I'm saying that's excellent.
Well, I think it's, it'd be a good value, I think.
Yeah, I think it would be a real good value. I know that there were several years ago when they had to do completely redo, I believe, the one out in the island there, and I thought it was a significant amount of money. That's why I said $15,000. Yeah, that's pretty good.
Right there, that page. You're right, yeah.
Yep.
We're all due to... We're all due to pay.
This is not, I'm not following this well at all.
So based on that, I'd like to put this into our capital improvement, you know, just for round two, if nothing else, just to kinda, but the one I like on the bottom, if you can quick look before it goes away, is the fact that, is where you would have the extra deck on it that would, for just casual viewing of the lake as well, as also, the groomsmen could be waiting up there and then slowly come down the steps to, to meet their bridesmaids as, as the people come up, like, find some wedding expert, right? But, anyway.
So that was still in your $15,000?
Yeah.
For pergola.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to put something in there, too.
Okay.
The, if you're gonna do, make that look good, I do something sitting out there right now, it looks awful, that scoreboard, and that's not a big deal to paint that, replace the floor, check the base, base is giving way, something like that. So the best that I could figure out would be somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000. So I'd like to get that in there to look at now. The only reason I got up to $5,000 was, is we don't even have Sun and Lake on there anyway. Across the top, we don't have Sun and Lake with the, the Sun and Lake symbol or anything like that.
All right.
And we get a lot of people here that use that scoreboard to do their drawings and stuff like that, so...
Take pictures?
Yeah.
And we don't have our name on it, right?
Just to improve it a little bit. So if we could stick that in there for first round.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, there's another table.
We can't, we've got old wood.
Start sneaking those off of there.
I'm not gonna talk about that.
Kurt's tab's a 15 grand, yours is five.
Oh, I got, I got...
I was already warned. I was warned.
All righty.
Any other capital, general fund capital?
I hope we'll be talking about drainage, because...
Yes.
Okay. Specific details on drainage, thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one more capital thing, but I was gonna wait until we get back in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Got golf fund capital, and then you have the general fund revenues where it starts for the general fund.
Okay.[1547.13] Okay.
I don't have a question on revenue, but the question I had, I asked Tanja yesterday about it, was the fact that the district uses Comcast for their internet service. If it would make sense for the district to go to Comcast and ask them for a district-wide Wi-Fi service. You know, right now, you have no choices. You got CenturyLink, and maybe you do it off your cellphone or something, but there's very little choices. And with my landline and my internet service, I'm paying about eighty bucks, or seventy-five bucks a month. And so, I would think that if you went to Comcast and said, "Look, and I wanna bring in two thousand homes here, what kind of deal can you give us?" I would think the residents, even though you take that money and put it into their assessment rate, but I think the value would be good for the residents, save them some money, and it would make us a better community for when people are looking at this as a relocation or a place to retire, right?
That's a good marketing move.
I'm gonna look into it.
Good marketing move.
Okay, thanks.
We're gonna get, the page four, there was a golf fund, we're gonna wait till Jim's here to get.
Yeah, this just gives you an overview of what you can expect when the golf is presented.
Gotcha.
Comcast, even though it's sitting in my front yard.
Okay.
They don't have Comcast up there. I think you've got one in your front yard, too.
Yeah, Tanja's got more leverage than we do. Alright.
Alright. So, assessment revenues, we kept the same as last year. We produced some on the bond collections. Code enforcement went up a little bit, just because of.
A little too.
I have no idea.
We are at the page right before the admin tab, so if you find the admin tab, we're at the page right before, right, we're sitting on top of that admin tab.
You know, on the fact that we're there, on the GPS advertising revenue, this is one of my pet peeves. When we put that GPS system in, Billy Casper promised us that they would pay for that thing in four years with generating eighty thousand dollars with the revenue through advertising only. And then, on top of that, one dollar per round was gonna go from the green fees over to pay for this as well, so it actually would generate a profit. And Casper has dropped the ball on the advertising side of it. I know they can't control the rounds that are played here, but somehow, we gotta hold their feet to the fire on this promise of eighty grand. I know the first year, I went out and worked it, Larry went out and worked, and David Ford went out and worked, and we got about thirty grand the first year. And the second year, I don't, I'm not sure what they got, and right now, you're showing nine thousand dollars. I'm just unhappy with it. Their performance is way off-base here. And we put that in because they said they could raise the extra eighty thousand bucks to go from the digital readout to the full-screen process, and they're just not doing, they're not coming to the table.
I don't think they're going out and soliciting anybody to buy a package. If you come to them and wanna take it away from them, that's the only way they're selling.
I don't know what you can do, if you can take it out of their management, but I don't know what, but they're just, ah, so what? That's the attitude.
Revenue has significantly gone down, so that is because we're not going out much.
Well, we'll be talking about it in two weeks.
Okay, sounds good.
So, just making a point.
One thing that I'd like to mention here in the revenue section is that we do have a transfer in this year. We haven't done this in the past, it's something that we've implemented this year, something new, and it's coming from the utility fund. We did eliminate the conservation and resource department from the utility fund, and picked up some of those services within the general fund. So, in order for those services to be formed, we transferred those funds from the utility to the general fund. And we continue, we're gonna continue to try and do this on an annual basis. The general, the utility fund, on average, makes two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, without big capital projects with the five hundred thousand dollar savings. So, there's money to be transferred without dipping into reserves in the utility fund.
Are y'all familiar with the conservation and resource management department? We've had that in place for about three or four years. It was designed to hire two full-time spray technicians, along with all the chemical costs, along with all the maintenance costs, so everything went into this department. It was a utility fund department. We no longer have full-time spray technicians. We've, we're saving money by contractually using Lake Masters for about twenty-two thousand a year to spray our ponds, so we cut costs in that respect. So, we wanna, and all the mosquito spraying costs were also included in that department. So, now that we've eliminated it, we're recommending the transfer from utility fund to the general fund. And last year, I think the budget for that department was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, we're gonna eliminate that department entirely. We've cut costs by eliminating the, well, we eliminated both of those positions, but one of the positions, we've transferred over to the roads and drainage department.
Yeah.
As well.
That's a one that might.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last item to round out the revenues is the two million, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That's coming from prior year reserves, and we'll see how that number ties into some of our other capital projects and golf equipment, and some of those other things, where we get that number from.
So, that's two point four million. That's back in here.
That's back, and we'll get to that. We'll match that number as we go along.
Gotcha.
So, we'll go ahead and go into the administrative tab. Overall, pretty consistent. Major decrease in legal fees, we cut that by half. We don't expect to have any big legal battles coming, going forward. Consulting fees, we did reduce drastically as well. Some of those consulting fees did get transferred to the capital improvement fund for the clubhouse renovation. Land acquisition, also, that couldn't have. And then, our two capital project worksheets that we have incorporated with the administrative department. One for server and Firebox upgrades, and the other for workstations and printer upgrades.
The consultant fees, thirty-one forty, which is fifty thousand, is that where you wanted to place the consultant to come in and do the assessment?
The assessment.
Yes.
I see back down through here, we got that, oh, I nearly forget this name. What's the name of that consultant we met with that's part of Billy Casper about the market for four thousand dollars a month?
Buffalo.
Buffalo Agency.
Well, I'd like to, when we start discussing this, to step across from Buffalo and look at the guy that came in here, talked to us, Henry Deloche, instead of Buffalo. So, when that point comes up, I like to weigh those two against each, because I think I might have been the only one here that got to hear both of them, and then Henry Deloche.
Henry made a lot of sense. I don't know how expensive he is, but he made a lot of sense.
Well, I was riding around with Jim, and I think you can quote me on this, and I asked him about that. I said, "What would it cost?", because we were talking about that type of thing, "What would it cost to get Henry?", we can't afford him, can we? And he said, "What do you think it would cost?", and I said, "I don't know", and he said forty to fifty thousand. Well, they're what, forty-eight thousand for Buffalo?
Really?
And that's just, Buffalo's, the company that has, keep me from track here, okay, is, they have the list. He can advertise this to twenty thousand people, boom, like that.
Correct.
Henry's is a strategy that we use to do the same thing, except Henry's is, he's proven. You know, he built forty thousand houses a year, you know? He's quite the guy.
Buffalo is not gonna guarantee you anything back at all. They're just, they're just gonna put it out there.
Yeah, they're in the same buildings, Buffalo is, I mean, literally the same buildings, Casper.
Well, if you read, if you read the sheet that they put out, it's not gonna be four thousand a month, either.
Well, that's the cheapest plan they have.
Well, even the cheapest plan, if you read the last line, it says, "All expenses are additional."
Yeah.
So, you're paying for travel, you're paying for room, you're paying for everything. So, now, it's more like sixty grand rather than seventy.
I still think that, Henry, which we can discuss later, I think he's the front page of Google, and these guys are the second page of Google. Best place in the world to second page in Google.
Probably three years ago, Tom Coste and myself and Cliff Wood went and visited a guy, and talked about email. What do you have, a half a million email addresses, something like this?
Yeah.
And he's in that same business of basically promoting, marketing your product through email and Facebook and all the.
That's the one that they had training, that you were gonna go to, and you talked, we talked in board meetings about that.
Exactly, so. I mean, if you're gonna go down this road, which I think we probably should, we get as many people involved here as we can, and get, pick the best choice, I guess.
We'll move on to community services.
Okay.
Which is the Buffalo tab.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you do, too.
Overall, department has an eleven percent increase. The majority is attributed to the Buffalo. I guess I'll let Tanio go ahead and speak on some of the other changes that might occur.
Well, I know that the newsletter is one. We do an insert six months out of the year, and I know through a program that Omar's department's trying to come up with, where we do bulk mail. It's, it would be the same cost as we were, we were spending a lot more mailing them out before. So, we looked at, okay, it's gonna cost the same amount to do the insert. I always sell a few more ads, because I don't have a problem selling ads in the newsletter at all, to help supplement the costs, but that's, that was one of the increases in this department. I did go down a couple of, in a couple of areas, like, you know, sponsorships. The street pole banners went up a little bit, just because they're a little more expensive now than they were when we first started the program. The Christmas lights would be the same. Went down a little bit in the promotional items, and other than that, pretty much, the marketing aspect is what caused the increase.
I just had one question, just quickly. In the newsletter, we put an announcement in there about kids driving carts, and we didn't put the age, but the law that I gave you, you know, we didn't put that. Did we ever go back and put that age in there?
Well, I think, I think with that, we were waiting on a final, they told us, they asked, the county asked us to hold off because they were getting ready to change, like, we didn't state it wrong.
No, no, we just didn't put fourteen. We put all the other things, it was the state law, except it must be fourteen.
Okay.
And I mentioned that to some, you know, I just wonder if we ever come back? Because last night, there were some kids riding a cart around here, and I was over on the putting green, and there wasn't a one of them fourteen years old. One kid couldn't even hit the floor with his feet.
Legally, by state law, you have to be fourteen. So, did we, he's asking if we put that in our newsletter? Well, I believe what, and this was a few months back, so I'm going based on memory, but I believe I put the link to all the, you know, I put the link to the specific, I just highlighted certain, at the time, what we were most concerned about, you know, was the roundabout and, you know, the places that they could go. I can do another, especially with summer coming up, this newsletter already went to print for May and June, but for June, July, I can certainly put another article in there.
It doesn't make me need an article, maybe just a highlighted banner, you know, remember, parents, they must have been by law, Florida state law, and it's quoted on those signs out there, I can't remember what it is, one thousand seven, I think, and just a banner to do that. And Mike, last night, saw three guys in a yellow cart, riding around, drinking, and they stopped over at the bathroom, over beside the practice area, and then one of them went over to where the door goes into the cart shed, was picking up something over and carrying it all. So, yellow cart.
Over here?
Mm-hmm. At eight o'clock.
Yeah, not only they fix the fourteen-year-old, but this, Mike, you gotta have the security aware of what's going on, too, because we see it, but it doesn't seem, security doesn't seem to see all this.
Well, they see him, but, I mean, here, one of the things, Wally just said that he wasn't fourteen. Well, I'll be honest with you, we've stopped many carts, and these, a lot of these kids are fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, you know?
Yeah, but those guys I mentioned, if they're on camera, it was right at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And then, one other thing I wanted to ask, which Kurt's sign come in here? You know, I didn't, I couldn't find it.
It's not in there, that's why I have it on my list to talk about today. We need to, if we can, open up the discussion for an electronic billboard.
See? I highlighted billboard design.
So, it's not in there, you're not gonna find it.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it, anyway. Okay, I'm done.
I think the reason it's not in the budget is the fact that we got a hundred thousand dollars towards it already, that isn't in the accounting at this point, right?
Well, we have, we have some more news. We actually have more than that.
Okay.
We are under contract for.
Seven more properties.
Seven more properties right now. And that's an additional.
Yeah, but we haven't decided that a hundred thousand dollars is gonna go with that, right?
We haven't. It's sitting in, it's revenue sitting in our budget currently, we have not decided what to do with.
So, let's make the assumption, we go forward with the electronic sign. So, this sixty-five hundred you have in your budget now, would that change up or down, or how would that change?
Well, that's just for printing the aprons that go on the billboards, so that would be, we may take it down for, you know, maintenance costs.
Well, my point is, would the electronic sign create expenses for you that should go into this line?
Yes.
That's all I'm asking.
We have electricity costs, we have.
Yeah, so that would, that number would change, then?
Uh, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna go up. Not too much now, it shouldn't be. So, this is a good number to work with.
Just leave it alone, then. Alright.
When we get to Kurt's sign, we'll discuss it. But I would think that you can actually reduce your advertising costs if you're offloading some of it to the electronic sign.
Yes, but what he's saying is, this wouldn't, the sixty-five hundred dollars would no longer be billboard design costs, it would be electricity costs, maintenance costs, whatever, your cost sheet that we had for the billboard. Yeah. That's probably what the sixty-five hundred would be, instead of actual printing costs, because that wooden billboard, we've changed it out four times a year, and this is how much it costs per year to change out, sixty-five hundred dollars. And that's only doing four or five. Four or five a year, that's it. Four or five a year. And the other, the other cost that would go into it is, you know, how often we want billboards designed for our personal use. So, but it's a very small, it's just, you know, me working with a normal person that I have designed the ones down, you know, for the electronic billboards down the road. So, but that usually costs between a hundred and two hundred dollars.
Okay.
We can go ahead and talk about billboard now, if you want to. I mean, that, really, if we wanna move forward with this project, do we wanna move forward with it now, or do we wanna wait until the next fiscal year? If we wanted to move forward with it now, we could do a budget amendment, we'd have to put it out for bid. I mean, there's no getting around that, but we would, the money's in the budget currently because of the sales from the land.
But my thought would be, do it now, because you'd want it ready for the fall, when the seasonal traffic starts coming back into town. I think that's when you wanna be ready for it to go, so.
And no longer we wait, the more of those billboards you're gonna have out there, probably so.
Well, then, it kinda goes back to what was stated earlier. Are we gonna be vying for advertising from a number of other people? Do we have any people lined up for advertising, besides, obviously, the value that brings to the community for, saves us in advertising?
No, we haven't gone out and done that, because we didn't know if we're gonna have it, so.
I'm just, well, I didn't know if somebody went out there.
No.
To try to get a feel for where.
Tanio has a feel. I mean, when I talked about originally with her, she had a feel that she knows a lot of people that would advertise on it. She hasn't spoken to them, as far as I know, and she hasn't got any commitments, but just based on her advertising in her newsletter, and knowing people, and everything else, she's basically guaranteeing.
So, do you know, in your research, in your research on advertising, on these billboards, and you've talked to some of the different people that are actually advertising, do you have a good feel for what they're paying? I know that when Kurt did his presentation, he said, "Gee, you know, we could probably capture some of this business, because we could actually do it even at a reduced rate." Have you got a feel for that yet, or?
Yes. One of the main ones, who owns five now in the county, both double-sided, you have to take that into consideration, too, but when they sell those advertising spots, they sell them per side. It's not like, they're not getting the dual advertising on both sides, they have to pay more for that. So, if they were to just go in, and they just wanna do a month-to-month, they pay nine fifty a month. If they wanna sign a six-month contract, it's a little less. If they wanna sign a twelve-month contract, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, if you go down twenty-seven, and you look at, and you sit and watch, even the one by Olive Garden, which is owned by, that's the only one they have, it's obviously the biggest one in the county, you sit and watch the different advertisers on there, and then you go down further and see completely different advertisers on those, there's people spending, I mean, there's, the market is wide open. I think Florida Hospital would be a no-brainer. I mean, they'll, they'll get on that pretty quick. You know, even targeting, I mean, having, being introduced to TDC Board, I'm pretty sure that downtown Sebring, Highlands County, Visit Sebring, they would probably utilize, spending some marketing dollars, with us being the first one coming into, into Sebring as well. I mean, I just don't think there's gonna be a problem selling our five spots, five to seven spots that we're gonna have available. I don't think there's gonna be a problem with it at all.
And that could vary. I mean, maybe there's certain times of the year that the district itself maybe only wants three spots, and now we got nine that we can sell for a month or two, so that revenue stream can go up and down a little bit, but still very confident that we can sell seven to eight spots every month.
Would we be offsetting some of our other advertising spots via other media, cause print advertising, for an example? We don't do any radio, as far as I know.
I typically only do, I personally, for my department, will do radio ads for a couple of my bigger special events, but we don't do radio. I've really gotten away from even doing newspaper ads. If I'm gonna advertise, it's on that billboard, or it's, or it's on social media. We have used the billboard by Olive Garden for advertising some of our special events. I believe it's owned by a doctor, a local doctor. Doctor Apodio owns that. Oh, okay. Yeah. And, like I said, I, you know, and even when I go and look at that one by Olive Garden, he's always having different people on there. At first, we, there was probably only three or four people, but it's really.
Well, you think about it, if you're gonna spend seven hundred, say, eight hundred dollars a month, and you're getting an impression hit every two minutes, and I don't know what a newspaper ad costs, but it's gotta be at least that, and you get a, open the paper, you see it once, it's gone. And to me, the best dollar spent for advertising would be on a billboard like that, that's constantly hitting you day in and day out, when you're going by, so.
From an advertising standpoint, I think it's great, and it could be very, very beneficial to the district in terms of a revenue stream. I just wanna make sure that we don't have this GPS advertising campaign.
And we never know that.
And then, all of a sudden, down the road, we're not, you know, we're not getting the activity out there, because you're gonna be, you're gonna be responsible for it, it sounds like. It's up to you to go out there and get the business. Am I?
Sorry?
As an individual, not another person hired?
No, it's true. It'll be me.
Okay. No. And the only other piece is, and I don't know how many of the individuals here have been affected by it, I have received emails, I've been, you know, a handful of emails, but I have received emails as well as you, sorry, an individual letter today. There have been quite a few people that don't know the whole story, but have said, you know, "This is not a great idea, it's kind of making a little bit of a commercialized business for Sun and Lakes versus a community setting." It's, that's what they're saying. You can laugh while you want, but there's a perception.
You want your roast page right there?
We sell a clubhouse, and we sell everything, right? So you've got to get used to that.
Well, and, you know, in advertising too, you know, I see, and granted, the newsletter ads are, our newsletter ads are really inexpensive, I have no trouble, a lot of times I have a waiting list of people wanting to get into our newsletter ad. We can creatively come up with ways to group different advertising packages, because now we have newsletter, we have special event sponsorships, we can do GPS, we can, you know, group GPS advertising in that too. You know, obviously there would be different price points to group it all, but, you know, that would be another way to help supplement the GPS, even though I know that's not my department, you know, or it's not what-
We can add it.
But-
We might have better success.
Would you be willing to take that over? Because somebody needs to.
I think, I definitely think that GPS advertising is a lot harder to sell than the billboard will be. But if you group it, it is, you know, or maybe sign up for a year and we'll give you GPS advertising for your first year type situation.
That's the whole thing. You start, you can start to bundle things that our competition can't do.
Right.
And that's what I like about the gazebo and the, you know, we can advertise weddings or announce weddings or whatever on, because you can put it on there for two or three days and it's gone, and everybody's happy, and our competition can't do that kind of stuff, so.
Right.
Do you think you need to take some time to do a needs assessment and call some people and ask the hospital and around and see if they would want to participate in this?
I mean, I'm, if that's the pleasure of the board, I absolutely can do that. But like I said, if you go up and down 27 and you sit and watch the different advertisers, and there are so many different, and we undercut what the competition's doing by a little bit, because we can do that, I don't, I really don't think we're going to have a problem doing advertising spots.
You're ready to put your reputation on the line for that, huh?
Well, I don't know if a lot of you noticed, but my, my original, I mean, I was in, I was in sales, that's what I did majority of the time before I came here, so I guess because I'm used to doing it, I just don't think it's going to be-
Well, you did that marketing for Camelworth, right, before you came with us, wasn't that your job?
Yeah, I was a sales and marketing manager there.
Well, it shows you how smart she is, she left before the house burned down.
That was several, that was about seven years ago. I think that's what it was.
I just, I'm for this, but I just, if Kurt said something, the first time when you said it was a slam dunk, I could take you to bankruptcy court and show you half a lot of slam dunks.
Well, yeah.
Oh, I didn't tell you, she wrote me a blank check, I guess.
I don't think anybody's against.
Is this project solely just on using the 100,000? Because I, I'm not against the project at all, but I'm against using that 100,000 towards it, because I'd like to use it for maybe Henry DeLoser, stuff that we have for land here, instead of, if this is such a good project, does this thing fail if we don't give that money?
No, it's, it doesn't matter what part it is.
Well, some of the consult, we have 50,000 built into our consulting, and I honestly, I expected a little bit maybe of that to be used for Henry DeLoser. I didn't, had no idea that he, what he would cost.
Okay.
This was the first number I heard today. So we can use some consulting money for Henry DeLoser, we can use the 100, actually, we're looking at close to 150,000 dollars now in land sales.
Well, that's, it's a good thing to have. But, you know, I'm for it, but if it's, that's successful, we can do it without using that money, I think.
Well, it doesn't matter where you get the money from, it's a big pot, how you want to buy it up.
Yep.
It doesn't really matter, but the point is, is that if we got 150 grand to buy this sign already in somebody's pocket, that sign will create enough money to pay for your Henry DeLoser. So, you know, and it's just, it's just a big number and how you want to slice it up, but it's all the same pot, so.
I just got to that 100,000, you know, we started this as a marketing program, and I thought we were going to use that money for that, but like you say, Henry DeLoser is our marketing program. He'll give us a strategic plan and how to do it, stuff like that. And so, so yeah, the money's the money, but I just didn't want to kill our marketing strategy we had going there for a while.
No, I don't think it kills anything.
As Henry said last week, when we listened to him, he said, you know, without a strategic plan, there's many roads you can take, it's just a question of which road you take, you know? With a strategic plan, you have a little bit of a map, a guide, versus going this way versus that way, that's all.
Oh, that reminds me of Yogi Berra. When you come to Fork and Road, take it.
That's right.
But Tanille, is Christmas light display, is that new lights? Is that what we do with that, or is that just putting them up?
No, that's, that's the company that we hire, that comes in and puts the lights up and-
Oh, we don't do that ourselves.
No.
They own that, they own it.
Okay.
It's a rental.
We used to, but it's a lot, I mean, Christmas lights are very expensive, they're extremely expensive.
Well, that explains it now.
Yeah.
We rent them.
We rent them, mhm.
And they're like your Christmas lights, they're a yearly purchase.
Does the board want to leave the 48,000 of Buffalo Communications inside the Community Services? Do you want to leave that there for now?
Yeah, for now.
I mean, it's not specific to Buffalo, it's just additional-
We can put another name to it if we want to.
Absolutely, yeah. And you would like for Tanille to call around some of the local companies to see if they have an interest in advertising into our billboard? Or do you want to-
I think it'd be better for, for us to have some ammo when people come at us, you know, about our sign.
Okay.
Because it, you know, I believe it could be a slam dunk, but I want to make sure it is.
Yeah, give us a little time, we'll do some research, we'll bring that back to you, and then if the board decides you're ready to go out for bid, we'll go ahead and do that.
Okay.
And I, because my Gmail was down, you know, protocol, Tolly, about that, I understand that Henry sent some materials, did you all get the materials from Henry?
He did, yes.
Yeah, I can't get them because of Gmail copy for you, would you please?
We can, we'll print those for you, we'll print them for you.
Okay, okay.
We'll get it for you, and I owe you a strategic plan too, by the way, so I'll get that to you.
And, but, just quickly, when it was down, it would not take my password, and it said that I couldn't enter the password or change the password, had to go click here, the company would change their password, so I didn't even mess with it.
Okay.
I didn't want to go outside of the system, and I'll call Tolly.
Okay.
But if you've been sending me things, they're still sitting in there for at least three days.
Okay. All right, sorry about that, we'll get you copies.
I'd share them with you, but it's a violation.
I don't know.
Mine asked for the password two or three times, but it's, I think it's over it.
Were you using my phone?
We can have your emails go to your phone too, I mean, to your telephones, who utilizes that?
It goes to my phone.
Yeah, you have it set up that way, we can certainly do that.
My phone.
Sir?
You don't have it, don't we?
You sent my Gmail address.
What about your Sun and Lake Outlook?
No, you mean your SNL ones.
The Sun and Lake Outlook, we can set, we can set up the email to go to your phones if you'd like.
That's what I want.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we're good.
So I get, we'll go ahead and jump into Recreation?
Thank you.
Recreation.
Recreation. Some of my notes, you know, I went ahead and highlighted Telephone, jumped up quite a bit. You can see in '15, '16, we spent about $7,000, and our budget was 2,000. So just off the bat, we were already under budgeting that department, that line item. We transferred $2,500 from the admin department into Recreation, because we're, from an accounting standpoint, we were coding it to admin when it should have been, you know, the fitness center. So just between the allocation and then getting it where it needs to be is why that increase is there. There's also some increases in repairs and maintenance, which Tanille discussed, some of her capital project worksheets, and then special events have changed quite a bit as well.
Why is the telephone so expensive?
Well, we have two bills going to Recreation Department. One is for the poolhouse with the internet and the internet and telephone lines, and then we also have a second bill going to the fitness center, which includes a TV package, the internet, and this, but it's the combination of the two that causes it to be that high.
You eliminated-
So I guess you want to go through the capital project worksheet?
Yeah.
Tanille?
Yes.
I believe you eliminated all the 5K races and whatnot. Is that true, or?
Well, we, we always have two parts to, like, say Dash and I. We have the Easter Festival part and we have the 5K part. So the 5Ks over the years, this was our fourth year doing Dash and I, and was our, this was our fourth year doing Trigger Trot. We started off very high numbers, like 600, Trigger Trot was 600 runners, then it's steadily decreasing every year. And the same with Dash and I. Dash and I started out, which was our first 5K, was almost 500 runners, and it's steadily gone down every year. For the amount of work that goes into the 5Ks and the time, if we were still maintaining those kind of numbers, it would be, you know, we wouldn't be having the conversation, we would definitely. But we feel like with the amount of extra work it puts on staff and the amount of extra time that goes into planning them and executing them, that we would, we would rather put more of our focus on the festivals. Because a lot of times, in the two days that we've now had to split, Trigger Trot, because Trigger Trot's festival has gotten so popular, we had to split the 5K apart from the festival because it got too overwhelming. So that, again, that's two, that's like having two separate events, really. It's a, it's a lot more cost, you know, cost-wise for employees, and it's just a lot more, it's a lot more stress.
There's a 5K probably every weekend somewhere in the county. So I think, again, there's just, there's so, there's so many 5Ks, and our numbers went down because of that as well, yeah.
Haven't we encountered, and I'm not looking to remove this, I'm just saying, haven't we, the 5K races, I understand, that's great, I mean, you recognize it, and you'd said, hey, it's not worthwhile. The Easter egg hunt, which I think is great for the kids, but they're all over the community as well.
Yes.
So how many, do we have a feel for how many people from the outside of this community come into our Easter egg hunts? I mean, I know the, the numbers that you have here, I have to believe with all of the additional help from, let's say, security or other departments and setting up prior to that and putting up all of it, it's going to increase, this number should be probably higher or higher budgeted number.
Well, honestly, until this, until this, this year, we, in our total costs, we have never really put the workload costs into what it took to run a special event. This is just us buying supplies to actually put on the special event.
So what you're, okay, longer than, so as you say 5,500 dollars, that's 5,500 dollars in raw materials that you need just to start it? It has nothing to do with any associated labor costs?
Correct. And that's, you know, with advertising, everything-
So do we have a feel for that? Would that double, would that, would it be $10,000 or?
Well, to give you an idea, Trigger Trot, I would say 20, I think, I believe it's about 2,500 dollars, is between 2,500 and 3,000 was just labor. But that's, again, two sep, with Trigger Trot, that was two separate days, two separate events. Now remember too, that we try everything in our power to get as many volunteers as possible. And, you know, for Dash and I, for example, we had 56 volunteers from the high school. We could not run these events without National Honor Society, we just, we couldn't do it. So with that being said, the festival portion of the events are a lot less demanding on us having to have so much staff. There's less setup, we don't have to go out to the courses, it's definitely not, it's not as demanding. So that, the employment costs will go down, no doubt.
Tanille, I have, I have this mark too, Easter egg hunt, just because I just know it's, I live right over there, and I know it's quite popular, but I thought, maybe I'm wrong, but did you say there's a lot of them in the county the last time, and we're just, and I too feel that, you know, is there a lot of Sun and Lake people that come here?
Well, yeah, we definitely have a lot of Sun and Lake people that attend our events, there's no doubt about that. Jonathan and I, this year was my first year since I've, this was our fifth, our fifth Easter egg hunt here, for me. I know we had them previously, but this was the lowest attended since I've been here. So that's when Jonathan and I kind of look at, okay, what can we do different, what can we, you know, do different that other people don't do? So we thought it'd be fun to have our Easter egg hunt at night next year, you know, just to change it up, to do something different than, you know, than other people do.
Was it something you feel we should do? I mean, you see, I'm thinking, what, why are we doing this if there's three or four others? And there's a lot of work involved, not only from you two, it's security and-
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily the 5,500, it's just everything that's on it, and whether it's really needed for our community.
Well, I can tell you, since I started here, before I came here, family type events were almost non-existent. And since I've been here, I think that this helps, helps create awareness for what we have to offer, it helps create, I think that's why our summer camps are so successful, because we have, the people know what we do. People know that when they come here, when we do an event, we do it right, and the families have a lot of fun. It's a great, and it brings great awareness to Sun and Lake as well. So from a marketing standpoint and from just community awareness, I feel like these events that we do are a great thing for us.
And how about the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve? Is that a package deal, or?
No, actually, New Year's Eve, we actually took the fireworks out for New Year's Eve. We felt that it was more of a supplement for the New Year's Eve party than really for the community. Because you, yes, you have some people come out and watch the fireworks that aren't at the party, but really, that's, it helps supplement the party, in my opinion.
It was 5,000?
It was 5,000, yeah, 5,000 just to do those fireworks.
I agree with that.
Independence Day celebration, that is a staple for us, and I would really, if there's any event that, that we kept, it would be that one, in my opinion.
So you-
It costs us the most, but it also, it's a great event.
You said we're going to do away with the New Year's Eve?
Yes, we're not going to have New Year's fireworks. They're still going to probably have their party and such, the unview, but we are not going to do the fireworks for New Year's Eve anymore.
Okay, that's a good idea. Because I thought one or the other should go, because the Fourth of July, there's a lot of them going around, and I know I go, I see the New Year's Eve one, but it's, just because there's, it's New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, I try to stay away from this whole area.
Right, I know.
It's a mad mess, but, but I don't think it's bad, I just, I'm just glad to see that, you know, so it'd be 18,000 dollars next year just for the Fourth of July.
Yes, that's, I mean, the fireworks can fluctuate from year to year, just depending, but they're anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 just for the fireworks. So that chunk right there is, the rest of it is for us to run the festival and, you know, what more?
Okay.
Yep.
I see you also put in, as a line item, bocce, which I think is great too, but has anybody looked at shuffleboard?
Hey, by the way, while you're, this is a good time, I want to go through that whole scenario, so can I do that, and then you can throw in what you want?
Like shuffleboard?
No, not shuffleboard.
You want to continue with shuffleboard, you want to, let Kurt go.
Well, here's, here's my thinking. When you drive into this community, on the sign out front, it says a golf and recreational community. This year and this year's budget, we're going to spend 2.1 million dollars on the golf section, and we're going to spend 6,500 dollars on the recreational side. To me, that, that's a huge imbalance. I have nothing wrong with spending money on the golf course, but where I have a problem is, we don't spend any money on the recreational side. We just do basic, bare minimum stuff, and every year, if we're going to sell ourselves as a recreational community, we should be expanding our recreational offering, improving it, making it better. And I'm certainly no recreational export, expert, but I did list some things that I think you could look at as far as making this a better recreational community, like bocce ball courts, like shuffleball courts, which I don't know if that's any good enough. I wrote down horseshoe pits, nine-hole frisbee golf course, lawn chest and checkers, and one thing I thought of was, how about this pond back here? We make it a fish pond, a, for residents only, a catch and release, and we get with the Fish and Wildlife Commission and see if they maybe would populate the thing, and then in the, when they have the summer vacation, she can take the kids out there and teach them how to fish. I mean, I don't fish today because my dad never took me fishing, and I'm glad he didn't because I don't like the idea anyway, but my point is, how many kids that come to this that probably have never gone fishing or never will go fishing, but this would give them an opportunity. So I'm just coming up with ideas, and obviously she would be the expert on that, and maybe she would be the expert on that and maybe has more ideas in terms of what to have. And maybe you have more ideas along that line. But my point here is, we spend an ungodly amount of money on that golf course and we do almost nothing for recreation. And if that's the way we wanna sell ourselves as a recreational community, then I think we gotta pick up the ball here and, and spend some money every year on this. And I'm suggesting, you know, 15 to 20,000 bucks that she can have every year to develop and improve our recreational services or amenities.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. You gonna go back to shuffleboard?
No, no, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about recreational services that is relatively inexpensive, okay, but brings a lot to the community. I mean, if you're talking bocce ball, that's an inexpensive investment in the community. It gives people the opportunity in another part of the recreation. Shuffleboard would be the same thing, maybe horseshoe, whatever.
I don't know.
I'm saying lower cost type of items. I'm not talking huge expensive.
And the one that I forgot to mention, cause I skipped over it, cause I wanted to send the other, I wanted to save it for last, was, I talked to To Neil about having a, a stable of bicycles for residents when they come down here, that, you know, they don't have a garage, seasonal residents, they don't have a garage, if I don't have a place for a bike, they could come over to the community center and pick up a bike and keep it for four hours or eight hours or whatever the terms would be. And it would, again, add another amenity to our community that people, I think, would appreciate it. I mean, I have a bike in my garage, but there's a lot of people here that probably would like to go for a little bike ride and don't have the bike to do it. So, and she did some checking for me and she can explain that.
I actually contacted Legacy Bicycles, which they're one of the staple bicycling businesses in Hounds County. And they said they have several people that come down and stay in Sunland Lake. They're always delivering bikes to come, you know, for a period of time. They'll rent them from them and they'll come, they'll deliver and pick them up. So I told them what we were looking at doing and we would be looking at starting small and growing, you know, growing it. Maybe this year we buy four bikes. And then they would actually supply us with a bike rack and a maintenance, a small maintenance agreement. These bikes that we would be purchasing are very low maintenance. They're a special tire that they're not gonna go flat, you know, tight situation. But for four of those bikes, it would be about $2,100. So that would be our starting point. And then we'll see, we can see how it goes and then, you know, grow from there. So that would be, I mean, I love the idea. We could see people riding bikes to here all the time.
And the other thing, we could, they could be rolling advertising. I mean, we can get these bikes fancy colors, bright colors, and then on the braces, put Sunland Lake Community Center on there or something like that. So as people are riding them around the community, they're, we're advertising ourselves too.
The fishing aspect that you talked about, Bass Pro Shops has a children's program. Do you just need to contact them?
Bass Pro?
Bass Pro Shop.
Okay.
They do have.
Well, and we do actually fish with our summer campers every summer.
Oh, do you?
We had someone donate some poles to us the first year that we had camp and they were brand new cane poles, right? Cane poles, and we use them every year. And they do fish. And they will catch fish after fish after fish. So they're definitely in there.
You mentioned the National Honor Society works for you. I was just wanting to bring up that tomorrow at 8:30, we're having a golf tournament over here at 70 bucks a pop to raise money for the athletic department at Seabrook High School, right?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't been at a golf course yet that doesn't do that, but usually the schools send their athletes up to work so much. Like when I was a college coach, my boy said he'd go out and work on a golf course 20 hours, you know? And I'll bet you money, you probably don't see too many athletes over here tomorrow just for the tournament.
Actually, the Seabrook High School cheerleaders volunteer for this event every year. And I know that because my daughter's one of them. She'll be here tomorrow, tomorrow morning working, but they do, there's almost 50 cheerleaders and they all work shifts. Now, I don't know, aside from them, what other athletes come out and help, but I do know they, they are a big chunk of who helps with that particular tournament.
Well, I think the athletic department should consider something because we're doing awful off of those kids. And there's, there's plenty of things around here to do, whether it's pick up litter or rake up leaves around the tees or something. There's plenty of things to be done. And I haven't been to a golf course yet that didn't do that. Sure, you can have the course. We'll make your money, have your tournament so forth, but, you know, those kids just can't handle that. It's like trophy, just participation trophy money. And so I think you might wanna think about that at least, you know. I'm done.
Mark, you want us to look into the cost of shuffleboard courts?
Absolutely. I mean, we kinda lump, and I know this separate, we lump community services and recreation. I, or should say we separate them, but in many areas, they cross one another, you know? And the things that Kurt brought up, I think are great ideas. But at the same time, sitting here, I don't want to be having somebody build an organization, and not saying that you would, but to build an organization, start bringing in people now because you have to manage it. Because a significant part of this, this budget for both community services and recreation is overhead. And so that's, I'm not looking to increase the overhead or the manpower. That, that's just my personal opinion, okay?
All right.
If they feel that they can run the operation and add some of these amenities, and it's the cost of the materials and things, that's one thing. But if they have to start bringing in staff and overhead and, you know, health insurance and workers comp and so on, so on, so on, I might look at it a little differently. I'd take a slower, slower approach. There's only a couple things of these. I see now these are entrance rugs that you put in there. We may be able to use the old ones somewhere if you're done with.
I'm sorry?
Do we have rugs at these places now?
Yeah, those are ours. We own them.
Yeah, but I mean, you're gonna replace them.
Yes, I would like to replace them.
Maybe we could use, Mike can use them out at the shop, I think. The AED training, we were required to take that one as a class. That's a great idea and I'd love to be in on again, once you start that program. Can I back up on that AED, by the way? Also, I get, Jonathan, you do the training for that, correct? And I don't know who, I brought this up at the meeting, or my meeting at least with Tanya. I'm not sure. Maybe everybody here knows, if, if we get this extra equipment, what is the process for people to even know that they should call over to the clubhouse? Is there somebody on call? I mean, in other words, these types of devices require pretty much immediate attention, very similar to the actions you took a month and a half ago. So if we train these people, we need to educate the community as to what to do in the event. You know, if Jonathan, for an example, and his staff are over here at the pool and something happens, or if somebody's out on the tennis courts or the, the pickleball courts or so on, who to call and make sure that there's somebody available that is trained on this equipment? Cause there's no sense in having the equipment if you don't have somebody that can utilize it.
Yeah, sure. If you don't mind my saying, get away from the speaker a little bit, the, the training for an AED, I don't know if you guys use an AED before, but it, it's very, very simple. Like the, the box, as soon as you open it, it tells you what to do. You don't have to think at all, you just follow instructions. So, you know, it doesn't require a full CPR course to know how to use it. And so that would be my suggestion. Obviously get the staff trained and CPR and, and first aid stuff like that, which we already do. But, you know, extend the opportunity to the residents, you know, it's gonna be nothing but good to say, hey, we've got two more AEDs on site for the district, which is already gonna make them happy. Stop by one Friday a month where we're gonna show you guys how to even use it. Just to, just to, like you said, to open up the public awareness, saying, you know, we have these available now. Here's where they're located. Come and, and watch how to use one, or something like that. And then we'll take the volunteers that wanna take that electrical shock.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's the thing, what you're talking about. I think we need people trained in every building.
Sure.
Because I was in an incident one time where we used one. And right before, the lady was shocked. Her head, that guy was on the ground, his wife was holding her hands. And I took her hands away.
Right.
She'd have burnt right there.
You, you're absolutely right. And that would be, that would be the biggest awareness part of it. Cause the, the machine is also so powerful that while checking for a pulse, if you're holding on to that person, it'll go through them, find your heart rhythm and not allow you to shock that person. And so, you know, definitely some awareness as far as, you know, don't touch them, jewelry and stuff like that, that you have to remove. So absolutely, there would be some, some awareness you wanna draw attention to, for sure. But it's, it's such a great thing, those AEDs are. And just a statistic, you're welcome to look up, I, I mentioned it every time I teach a class, the success rate of an AED is 91% success in the first two minutes, which sounds ridiculous, but then you have average emergency responder time is six minutes. And it drops 10% every minute after that too. So then you have the reality of why AEDs work. They have them on ambulance as well, is because eight to 10 minutes later, after the incident, you're down to 10%.
And that was precisely my point. If, if something happens, the equipment's there, but if somebody else doesn't know who to call or what to do, or even take themselves and go over and get the equipment, see if they can administer it. They might be afraid to do that.
Sure.
Even though you say that's self-explanatory. You can't be reading instructions while you're running down minutes.
Absolutely. And so, you know, I, like I said, the answer to that would be offer it, offer some type of public awareness. Come and get here. It's not, it would be, you know, a 25-minute ordeal just to watch a video about it and have a practice one to, to go over with it. Certainly some awareness would be outstanding.
Call for this. Yeah. And if you could do it every year, because in that situation, I forgot to yell 91, cause someone would call 911.
Right.
I forgot.
For sure. Which is step one in the CPR process. So, thank you.
$1,800.
You good? Guess we're gonna be picking, To Neil.
To Neil, these, these signs for the, I think, what you call them, banners?
For the pickleball court or the racket club?
Those are real important.
Yeah, the court numbers, absolutely.
They must be pretty nice.
No, 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 no. You know the banners, the banners that are on the outside of the racket club? The, they're big. Those need to be replaced. They're really faded.
You're talking the yellow one that says Sunland Lake?
Yes. Well, this, this is, this, yeah, this quote is supposed, is for both. It's for court numbers and for replacement banners.
And we currently have no court numbers, I believe. Unless they're hidden somewhere, because I haven't seen any of them over there.
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, they came down when we, we did have some.
Okay.
We're going with a different material this time.
Okay.
Neil, that water cooler, how old is the current water cooler that we got?
Um, three years.
And it's shot?
It's, yeah, it's pretty, it's, we, we have repaired it and replaced filters as much as, as we can.
Is that because of the sun? Or is it the weather or what?
Part of it's the weather, but I think, I mean, it's, it's a commercial, I mean, it's a commercial unit, but, I mean, it's been out there for three years.
Is this any better than what it is?
They're about the same. They'll be about the same.
Are they the same brand, do you know? Same brand?
These ones are a little different than the last ones we
Different brand?
Yes.
We're gonna try to go with a different brand. It's not
Would it be cheaper to put a water fountain at the bathroom, which would be more permanent? Or cost the same?
Not in the fitness center though.
No, I'm talking about the
No, on the outside.
The racket club.
Outside the building.
Yeah.
But this is
The racket club, isn't it?
Yeah. Where the new building is, where it stores food.
Oh, wait a minute.
I can look into how much
There's more than one water cooler.
There's multiple. There's the fitness center, there's the racket club and the pool, I believe.
Well, there's more than one.
So yes, these are three?
Yes, this is for three.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Okay. I didn't realize that either.
Yeah.
The display racket ball club, whatever, display board, is that being done by outside or is it gonna be done in-house or the building of it?
Oh, no, this, this would be, this comes as one piece, just like the ones we have at the district office.
Okay.
Yep, we will install it and
I know the one there is ready to fall down, the existing one.
Yes, it needs to, yeah, we, that's why we wanna replace it.
Bottom of it, so right.
We actually built that ourselves.
Community center bathroom stalls.
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, I went in the ladies bathroom today just to check it out.
I wonder what you've ordered.
What's wrong with the
What's wrong with these? Other than it's dated, the men's room, it's, they might be a little dated. There's, the way I read this, it sounded like they were falling down and there was graffiti all over them.
The women's, the women's restroom?
Yeah, I didn't go in there.
There was, there was one time, not too long ago, that one, someone had either pushed up against or it was actually leaning. And for a long time, you couldn't even close one of the stalls. You know, we've since put a Band-Aid on it and it's, it works now. But I believe those are the original stalls from when they built the community center. And we renovated everything else in here. And because, especially with, I would really like to put a baby changing station in the women's bathroom as well. Right now, there's no place you can really place it without taking out one of the stalls. And we certainly couldn't take out one of the stalls without actually redoing the whole entire structure. So that's, I mean, like I said, it's a request.
$3,500.
It's a request.
I'm kidding.
Well, that's nothing wrong with a request. But the way this was written, today I had to go check them out, but it sounded like they were all falling down. And I said, hell, what's wrong with this?
Like I said, the women's, the women's is, it's not
Well, I didn't actually use it. I just went
The women's is actually not
Sure?
And I hadn't gotten into the men's and that's why when, when you all came back
You were in there a little while ago.
We had walked out there, cause all of us were going in there to inspect, inspect them together.
Well, we can take it out later, I guess.
Guess our pool's falling apart, huh? Yeah, I think our pool was falling apart.
And we did put two pool attendance records in there, just, just for your information. And fitness corner. There was one slight variance. If you had last year's, or 2015, when we started doing it compared to 2016, June and July, we did have some new employees and we realized after about six weeks that they weren't scanning the cards properly. They were checking the memberships but weren't scanning, so it wasn't calculating. So that's why those numbers looked so, so different. They looked down. And then we also had the pool, last summer, we had the pool leak, which affected us being open some too. So the attendance at the pool is definitely not going down at all.
Okay. Ready for finance?
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Finance. When I went through all these things, retirement contributions, life and health insurance and insurance and workers comp, how much money do we actually spend for all that for everybody? Like, gotta be a million, isn't it?
It's, it's up there. I'm not sure exactly what the number is.
I mean, it's gotta be amazing.
For all, all?
For everybody.
Work comp, he wants to know all.
I mean, it's gotta be a million bucks. Did you see some of those numbers?
You can't do anything about it.
No.
30%, increase you say.
Well, you'll see workers comp and life insurance, some, in some departments, you'll see the fluctuation. In the past, we're budgeting based on what current needs are.
Right.
Whether, we might be covering me as an employee only. And then during open enrollment, I could decide to bring along my wife and child. Fine, but we didn't budget for that. So this year, we went through open enrollment, we had some, some employees add family members and you can see the spikes coming in. This year, Tanya's been meeting with the county. We've been kinda working with them on trying to look at some of our costs, our health costs.
Yeah.
And we're looking forward to continue working with them.
Out of the employee benefits, we spend
Significant amount.
300, I have about, I calculated about $360,000 just in health insurance, life insurance and disability costs for the employee. 320 of that is just health insurance alone. So it gives you an idea.
Do that, does employees contribute to that?
For health insurance, yes, they do.
Okay. So it's the same program with retirement too? They contribute somewhat?
That's the district cost, I believe. I mean, we did, we're looking at the calculations. I'm just, that's from memory, but that's, that's the calculation.
It's like all of our plans. We, we paid so much and the government paid so much and sort of like, I was just shocked when I heard that was crazy. I know it has to be done.
So we have two changes coming to the finance that we'll bring in the next budget meeting. We dropped travel and training down to 5,000 and the dues and subscription down to 1,500. So minor changes there. Overall, nothing's really changed. Employee stayed the same and no other costs really went up or down. Real estate taxes, we dropped six grand because of that exemption that we received a couple of months back.
Excellent. Question, how come always finance departments get the big, big merit raises?
Well, now, remember the percentage that you see 7% is not
Well, now, remember, the percentage that you see seven percent is not all merit. Okay, I want to make sure, when you, as you go along and you look at what these percentage change, this is a budget change from previous fiscal year to this fiscal year. Not all the seven percent is merit. As I, you know, explained to some of the supervisors, Omar is about to be a CPA. And so in that, I expect an adjustment for his pay. And it's not a merit adjustment.
It's a level change.
That's less than.
Is that like.
It's a level change.
It's a, it's a level change.
Yes.
And that's written someplace that if he gets a CPA, he should get more, or is that just?
It's not written, but.
That's just a good old boy.
Well, it's a standard practice of most businesses. And I believe that my employees that have certifications, college degrees, any, any type of licenses, it brings, it brings benefit to everything that we do here. And I'm a full believer in encouraging employees to go to school and to receive licenses, to receive degrees. It's not written anywhere that I have to do anything. But if I don't, then somebody else will. And I feel like, you know, the team that I have is very important right now. And, and so.
Well, the merit raise itself is only three percent.
Now, the merit raise, three percent is, is a standard merit. If you have a good employee and they, their evaluation is, is an excellent evaluation, they will receive a three percent raise.
And it's, that's what I was saying. It was a level change. So automatically with the level change, it's going to boost up the bottom and it's gonna raise the top. And then there's a mid-range in there.
That's correct.
Okay. I just, that's fine.
And we.
And we talked, we talked before and you said, I was wanting to, we talked about it. But, and I don't know if you could do it for the future, but, you know, we talked about all these counties that nobody's getting raises for a long time because they're financially strapped. When do you think for us, because I looked at the merit raises alone, we've got quite an increase. And that happens, you said, every year at three percent. How long do you think we'll be able to give three percent a year? Or is that something that?
As long as we, I mean, as long as there's budget for it. The merit idea was, was part of the district before I got here, you know. And this is not something that we have to entertain for the future. If we wanted to change, I know a lot of governments use a step basis pay. And then once you receive, once you hit that top level of step, whether it's five years, ten years, you're, you're done. There, there's all kinds of ideas that we could incorporate in that. It's just that this is a program that has been part of our employee manual for a long time, the merit system. I don't know many governments that typically use a merit system. I think it's good. It makes us, you know, sit down with the employee every year, give them an evaluation. We can still do evaluations without a merit system. So it's something we could look at.
Do you do evaluations once a year or every six months?
Once a year.
Okay. And that coincides with potentially a merit raise?
Yes, it does.
Well, I think it's, given the raises are great, and I'm all for that, but there's gonna be, come to a point where.
Our costs go up and up and up.
And I look at five, and I told you, I looked at five percent increase at a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That's probably about two years of merit raises in three years. And the overall cost, because the merit raise isn't the other, the other stuff that goes along with it, right? I mean, FICA goes up.
Everything goes up.
Everything. Everything goes up.
A merit raise at just three percent of your salary.
Yes, everything goes up.
It costs us.
About forty percent more.
And I just think that we need to take a look at that. And, and I'm not saying that we don't give raises yet, but I think there's gotta be a time where we look and see.
Highlands County, what they have done for their staff is they, they finally gave a cost of living adjustment after six years, I believe. Their staff received no raises. I'm not talking about the sheriff's office, but the basic, basic employees of the county. The sheriff's office uses a step plan.
Or COLA?
No, the sheriff's office uses a step plan. They probably also give COLA adjustments. But the Board of County Commissioners did not give COLA adjustments, I think, over five or six years. From two thousand nine, probably all the way to about two thousand thirteen or fourteen is when they received a first COLA adjustment.
Yeah. My wife worked for the county of La Porte, and she didn't get a raise for eight years and they had steps. So she got one in there. But the county employees didn't get a raise, well, she left and they still hadn't. But a two percent raise in the county is a half a million dollars. And that's what, I mean, that's what stuff we gotta start looking at. Not that our employee, I think we have the greatest bunch of people, but when you give a two percent raise and it costs you half a million dollars, and we're thinking about a five percent rate in our assessment, we get a hundred and forty thousand? I, I just think that we should look at it and, and keep going until I guess, it's just something we should look at.
Okay, understood.
Okay, Mal, this code enforcement.
I ain't even gonna touch it.
You got anything on code enforcement? Overall, code enforcement's a limited change much. Pretty consistent last year. Going back to salaries and wages, there's a seven percent. You see that number there? One of the officers, he got a certification, so that explains that. Workers' comp, slight increase there. We did decrease some of the supplies and gasoline and oil. Moving on to security. I had one major highlight, which is contract labor. We did eliminate that from the budget this year. Mike typically doesn't hire outside. Security guards are all internal through our payroll. So there was really no need to have that five thousand dollar budget there.
Will we be adding any more security, Michael?
Yes, say yes. Yes. And you know, I kind of hesitated because we still have the same amount of hours. But like, I have one guy, he's seventy-five years old. He wants to cut back on it a day, two days. I got another Jerry, he's a twelve-year-old. Jerry does three hundred a week. It's way too much for him. So I'm trying to cut back on, so Jerry wants to cut back today, so we will hire another person. So I have more bodies, but it's not, but it's not gonna cost us anymore. So.
Good enough. That's fine, actually.
Between illness.
It was a simple question.
You know, illness and surgeries, we just have to fill the hours.
I think that he actually works with a very limited amount of people. I've said in the past, and he's been gracious. And he says, no, I think I have enough people. And I'm thinking, no, he doesn't have enough in terms of code enforcement, specifically I was thinking. But he says, no. So that's why I asked the question.
On, on code enforcement, we do six days a week. We have so many people called us, but it says, in the past, you know, we only staffed five, and now we have six. It's not worked out because we have a weekend per time.
So you have enough people, is what you're saying. Okay.
Where I would like you to say yes is that the, I know our county taxes pay for sheriff enforcement, but I just, I don't like the way we people are using Sun and Lake as their own little personal drag strip. I mean, you can hear motorcycles going up and down that thing, seventy, eighty miles an hour. You got people running around, they're, they're running stop signs and, and I.
Over the last month.
Yeah.
The sheriff, the sheriff department have been here.
Yeah.
They gave us seven or eight tickets on one stop sign one day.
Okay.
They have stop speeders. They can't be there all the time.
Not asking that.
But, no, I understand. The sheriff's department does work very closely with us, but, and they're trying, but they just can't catch everybody.
I'm not asking to catch everybody, but what I would, if you do it often, if you can't do it once a year, which I think you did last year, once or twice a year, and that's it, you can't do that. You can, you gotta create, maybe there's a cop there and maybe there's not a cop there. And obviously, our security can't issue tickets. So I, I just think we need to be more focused on creating, there might be somebody there and there might not be somebody. And the only way you can do it is have them here more often than once or twice a year. That's all.
Well, we asked the sheriff's department if we could do certain offices because there's a couple that live here, and they actually, and they said, no. And it's a list that, that if we ask for somebody, they have to mark the list and they have to.
Take.
You know, so, I mean, if you want us to keep the five thousand dollars in, I would love it. But I, you know.
That's what I'm asking you to do, is to put more money back in the budget to.
Money, yeah.
To cover the expense of hiring these guys. I think you have to hire them for, it's so cheap. It's like four hours for what, a hundred and thirty-five bucks or something?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, and that's where we need it.
That's why I'm saying, ask for the help and you'll probably get it.
I'd like to call a meeting with Sheriff Blackman, actually, and just talk to him about what our ideas and goals are. They do have an office space here at the district. But if we could just talk to him about what our concerns are, maybe he will provide some more coverage here in Sun and Lake on a regular basis without us paying for it. I mean, if you allow me the opportunity to talk to him.
It's hard to try.
But we do pay for it.
Well, we do pay for it, yes.
That's what I'm saying. We pay for it.
We're talking about paying extra, but, but you got Ponce de León here on the golf course, and you can see these people going forty, fifty miles an hour.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that's why that one speed bump had so many marks in it, is because the cars are going faster, bottoming out on the thing. I mean, it's, it's foolish.
Well, you can just.
But it was, I, I mean, it was, I mean, I really wasn't up to code.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just making a point.
A lot of people.
And, and the reverse of that, I was at Hilton Head and I was going twenty-eight miles an hour in a twenty-five zone. The guy pulls me over.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
It's brutal there.
Yeah.
But you could just about pick the cars out here, too. You can name, I can name five cars that's used to beat all the time.
All the time. So.
But if you want to leave it, you know, the five thousand dollars in, I mean, I'll leave the sheriff there.
Let's, let's put it in for the next go-around. How's that?
Put it in.
Okay. Thank you.
Tanya, just, Tanya?
Yes.
Just to give you a heads up, I have to leave in about fifteen minutes. I have a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
So just decide what you want, want to do, whether we shut down or go.
I think we can resume, resume utility discussions at the next board meeting, if y'all want to do that. But let's, let's try to get through buildings and grounds and roads real quick, if we can do so.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
I love seeing things go down. Can you tell me why that went down?
Which, where?
Buildings, ground maintenance.
Grounds.
Yeah.
What section do you look at?
I'm looking at salary and wages. I kind of like that going down.
They moved the guy.
So we had another position that was budgeted between buildings and ground, roads department, and some of the utility department for the public works director. We're no longer budgeting that position at all. So that's why you see that, that significant decrease in that, those two line items. Contract labor's thirty thousand dollars.
Or you.
We're bumping that up. That's the transfer that we did from the conservation department into the buildings and grounds to cover the spraying, lake masters, and those types of items. The grounds reimbursement, that's a, it's some of the money that we were transferring to the golf club to handle some of the expenses with the clubhouse and repairs and maintenance that we've eliminated, as well as increasing chemicals for the mosquito spraying that was once again inside the conservation department and now been moved over. Buildings and ground doesn't have any capital project worksheets.
Are those chemicals, did you say for?
Mosquito.
Oh, that's for mosquito. That's not for, I know that there's some in the sewerage. Now, this is, okay, this is wrong area, okay. Because I know there's some new restrictions.
That doesn't include the, the contract we have up to do the lakes, right?
No.
They produce your own chemicals?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Who are we using now to spray the vines and whatever on the, the golf course? Is the, is the golf people doing it or?
No.
The district. The district is still doing it?
The district is doing it.
Okay. But we don't have anybody specifically to do that?
No, they eliminated that.
Yeah. So we still, we're not gonna spray any of the vines or anything then?
We are. We have some areas we need to treat on, on turtle.
But you don't need licenses. Whatever they use, they don't need a license.
Okay.
To do that. We are doing it, but we don't need the.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mike, is that a new person you're hiring? Is that a ground maintenance tech or?
Yes.
Okay. That's the new one, right?
No, he's gonna be a road technician. He's gonna be inside this next road and drainage department.
Okay.
You see it's a slight decrease. Once again, the public works came out, but we added the new position in, so it kind of washed altogether.
Okay.
Some of the major highlights in this section, drainage and maintenance, two hundred and fifty thousand. Continuing the projects. There's a capital project worksheet that Mike will touch on on that. Or you want to talk?
Of course. That gave me mine.
You want to talk about the changes we have for this page, and then we'll move on to drainage real quick. Let's.
Okay. Roads and sidewalks, we've increased to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. The wheel motor, we've actually removed from this year's budget. We'll have that changed at the next budget discussion.
Can you, you want to scratch through that wheel motor?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just.
We're also gonna scratch through the forklift. And we're gonna replace that with a utility vehicle gator, which is about nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
You take the forklift out?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the tractor's going out, too, then?
No.
No, tractor's not going out.
We are reducing the cost of the tractor from one hundred and fifty to one twenty-five. The quotes came in at one twenty-five. That was our mistake. We are recommending to purchase a, a tractor with the longer reach sidearm this year.
All right. One change I'd like to see, roads and sidewalks at two seventy-five. I'd like to take twenty grand, I think, is the number, out of that at two fifty-five and move it up to street light installation and make that twenty-five thousand. And the reason I'm after that is because we have so few sidewalks in this community, and people walk the streets at night. And to me, this community is poorly lit at night. And if we would put more money towards that, and I know how Duke Energy works, we're not gonna spend it all anyway. But if we've got the money and the budget, that means we can go to them and say, look, we want you to install seventy-five lights instead of ten lights or whatever the number is. I don't know. But I just think if we put more money there, we can get that project up and running quicker and be safer for the community and, and just make the overall community better. I rode my bike down, from here down Granada, and I had to think about it, and I look back and I could see two streetlights in the whole length of Granada, which is not right. I mean, it should be better lit than that. So my opinion, we should move some funds around a little bit and put more money into streetlights.
I can go for that.
Okay.
I think we ought to move some funds around and put more money into the drainage as well.
Well, we can do that.
And the reason I say that is, and I've expressed it in the past, we, we budget every year the same amount for our drainage. We stay at an even keel. We never really progress. We never get further along, which is almost like a Band-Aid every year. And if we continue to put two hundred and fifty thousand in it, we've already spent it planned right now.
Got it out.
And if we have, if we never go ahead and add some additional monies to this, we'll never get ahead of the drainage problems that are in this district.
Well, I agree. I agree with you on that. In fact, I think at the last budget meeting, I, I made the same comment. You guys are just flatlining here. And why don't you bring the information we need to make a good decision? You know, how much money do you really need to get the problem fixed and move on? And I've never seen that numbered, so.
Well, I still, still come back to the point where we were talking about buying the equipment and hiring two people to be working this full-time. And you wouldn't, you don't want to attack the problem, there's where you attack the problem. We have people to drain ditches all the time.
I mean, based on our budget.
If that's still an option, you, you brought it up one time.
On this drainage, George has worked here thirty years. We did the first.
First drainage program we started upfront. George, we finished it up, we were walking through it, and he turned to me and said, you know, I've been here thirty years. This is the first time this has been done. And that's exactly what we have to do. We have to get equipment, get a couple of people, and we have to stay on it. Start a program yearly, you know, and continue. We have started it. I'm, I mean, I'm very happy with what we've done this year. The residents are happy, but we're still a long, long, long way away. You know, we've got Matanzas to do. We've got Sun and Lake Boulevard down the bottom. I mean, Columbus, we got up front, we have to finish. And also, I mean, Kurt, thank you, because that's exactly what we need. Thanks.
I mentioned something to Tanya the other day on Columbus, and she's going to check into it. I don't know if this will work or not, but Columbus and Menorca have had a lot of problems with water, especially on Menorca and Columbus. And when the state is going to put that fence in, I mentioned to her for them to cut a big, deep ditch on the other side and put a pond back in that fenced-in area for water supply for wildlife. I don't know if the state has, would have any desire to do it or not, but at least if we bring it to them, maybe they can at least think about it.
I mean, I don't know yet.
We're gonna, we can, yeah. Drew hasn't heard this yet, but...
Okay.
We're going to talk about it, and there may be some places that the state owns up in that north section that could be viable for a pond. I mean, what Larry's thinking is more towards Columbus and helping, trying to assist in some of the drainage issues there.
That would definitely be a good idea if we could get them on board with it. I think that would be our hardest thing to do, to get them to go along with it, because we'd be, are you assuming you're going to be using some of their property to, that's where you want to put it, preferably?
And the state's always looking for a place to water the wildlife, that type of thing. This drainage ditch would collect the water for them to supply the pond.
Yeah, we could definitely look into it. It's just whether or not they would entertain it.
And I don't know.
Because they have to give us a decent amount of land to do it, of course, but I don't know, I don't know how perceptive they are.
Well, I don't think it'd cost them a fortune to put it in. They've got the equipment to do it. Bulldozer will do the, all the work in it.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be that difficult for them. I'm sure it'll get expensive when they get done figuring it out, but...
Mike, on the listing, we highlighted in yellow, the ones that's going to be done next, is Unit fourteen Balboa in Columbus. Is that Chuck's house?
Yes.
We looked at, and that's not in this year's plan?
No, well, for next year, well, we talked, talked about, well, when we talked about it, we were going to do what we did this year now, which is done.
And we were gonna, hopefully, we're gonna, next year would be that area.
Okay.
Because they definitely needed that whole side. I mean, they can't get out of there the driveway sometimes.
Those people bought pumps.
Right, right. They bought pumps, stayed hoses across the road. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous, but, you know, we definitely have to address that.
I see the one here between Mexican Hat and Balboa. Is there anybody living over there? Mexican Hat, I was over there last night. I don't find out where that was.
There's a few houses in that area, you know, that way.
I can find four. Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just checking it out, see where I was at.
So, just to verify, we're going to increase streetlight maintenance to twenty-five thousand?
Streetlight installation, yes.
Drainage, you said you wanted to increase. Is there projects that you want to add that aren't highlighted in yellow?
Well, the next two are fifty thousand dollars. It's twenty-five each.
I mean, I don't... Want to go ahead and do those two?
I don't know. It's...
We're going to look at that.
It's right after...
Kurt, from the book.
Drainage.
It's right here.
Just go to Drainage, and it's in the back.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to pick up those...
It's Menorca and Balboa.
So, Unit twenty-five and Unit fourteen?
Yeah, two twenty-fives.
Correct.
Unit twenty-five and fourteen. So, that would pick up the people there on Columbus that's got the pumps.
Yeah, it's back here somewhere.
I'd highly recommend you get that.
No, that's, that's the third one down.
Columbus is number six on that list. We're projecting almost a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project.
And that's two-hundred dollars.
I mean, that's...
Yeah, okay.
So, that's, that's going to be a big...
Wow. Well, I could pick up twenty-five, fourteen, and eleven.
Yeah. Want to do those two?
What do you guys think?
I just found the page. Which ones you're talking about?
The next two.
Fourteen and seven, the next two.
That aren't...
The twenty-five thousand dollars.
That aren't yellow.
What that aren't yellow?
Number four and five.
Fourteen and seven?
Yeah, twenty-five and fourteen.
Twenty-five and fourteen.
Talking about the ones that aren't. These are already in the budget, the other ones.
The other two are.
Unit twenty-five, zero, fourteen.
Okay. Balboa and Columbus, Columbus and driveways.
Menorca and Balboa. And the Columbus one, I don't know if you two are familiar, but I think Wally and Mike went out. Who is the guy?
Chuck.
Chuck.
Chuck Raffini.
Raffini. And he's got a pump that he, when it gets so bad, he pumps across the street.
That's a second pump.
There's a lot of water on Columbus, but it's a big problem. I think...
There's no place to drain it. That's the problem.
Yeah, talk to us about it.
Uphill.
So, that's, that maybe can be the next year.
That's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, so that kind of eats into that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand very quickly that they'll budget for the following year.
Like I was saying, that's a...
So, you're going to bump it up to three-hundred then?
A ditch across the street would really help that.
Well, it would, but it goes uphill to that stop sign. My first impression was, I understand there's a lake back out there behind Chuck. Pump it that way. Bring all drains together, go out there, find that lake way back in there. Downhill that way. You know what flows downhill.
The water will go downhill, no doubt.
I mean, we have, we have presented to you on the other side some road paving. I mean, we could put off the road paving another year and do more drainage this year. I mean, we're trying to create a balanced budget for you. I mean, what we want to do is have enough revenues to support the operating costs. And operating costs would be drainage, road paving. We believe in our, as far as priorities on road paving, we have the parking lot to be paved. It's in front of the racquetball club where the golf course maintenance sits now.
Yeah, I think that's important.
We have to get that paved, but otherwise, I mean, I'm not recommending, I'm not saying to put off road paving. It's just that if we want to do more drainage, we have to.
We've got to cut someplace.
Yeah.
Well, we can talk about it.
Mike, if you have to leave, what, we could just finish up on a couple of capital things and allow Wally to take over?
Yeah, I don't mind if that's what they want.
Or we can adjourn. It's up to the board.
I have no problem. Now, Wally might, but I don't.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine.
We don't...
Mike, do you want to talk about Miranda Homes or not?
Sure. Miranda Homes, we just had a survey.
We got it.
We just had a survey. We are going to start cleaning the back, the back of the homes ourself, in-house. There are a few home, few homes that they, we're going to make them move their fences. We're also be sending letters out to all the residents. What happens is, they cut their lawn, they cut bushes, and they throw everything in the back ditch. That's why everything's growing in. So, what we want to do, and we want to do it in-house, go in there, clean it up, and set, set a schedule to go in there like every six months and clean it. And at least this way, they'll see that we're trying to do something for them, too.
Okay.
I mean, I, I really think that we should have started this by now, but we have a survey, and it's all set to go.
Okay.
As soon as I get some, you know, as soon as we catch up on some projects, we're going in there.
Which street you going to start on first, Mike?
Terega, isn't it?
Terega's the first.
The first one, the real problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Since we do have a paving job over here, we want to hit first after you get, you move. How's that going, the job? Are we pretty well on the line for July or August?
For...
Finished the building?
The maintenance. The maintenance, oh, yeah. I was, August fifteenth.
August fifteenth. And they said they're on, on schedule.
Good.
But we're in Florida.
September fifteenth.
Oh, you mean this year?
This year.
Oh, I know, you meant this year.
It's the early...
No, they're doing pretty well. They, they really are. I'm over there three times a day, and they are getting it done, so...
I do have a question for you. In that main building, is there a soffit that goes under the overhang? You know what I mean by a soffit?
No, there's no soffit, and there's no insulation on the area inside the building.
Well, my concern is, if you have a strong wind, you got all that sheet metal just hanging out there. I could see where the wind could just go right up there and just rip that roof right off that place, if you don't have a...
The building's supposed to be designed for a hundred-and-forty mile-an-hour wind, so that's realistically...
Well, the building probably would stay there, but it doesn't mean the metal's going to stay on it. Is that, is that what you're saying? The metal will take a hundred and forty?
It's supposed to. That's, that's the way it was intended and designed to do.
Well, I don't know. I'm pretty leery of that.
I, I'm not going to speak one way or another, but I don't know, I don't know how much soffit we'd need.
Well, I didn't know if it was part of the building. He's hadn't finished yet, because they've still got some work to do on it. I mean, you walk in the building, you can see daylight.
They do a lot of work on the outside, too.
There is a cover that goes over that daylight area.
Well, I understand, but...
There is, but...
Huh?
Yeah, towards the front there is, but I don't know if there's on the soffit itself. I don't know. Drew, you designed it, it's all...
It's kind of happened for me, but I do not believe there's any soffit work planned for it.
Okay.
Well, as long as they stand by their guarantee on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know if the guarantee's for the roof. That's my concern. I could see where the building's going to stand up, but anyway, doesn't matter. I'm just curious.
Well, if we ever get a tornado, I mean, I think a tornado would be something that would test a building like that here in Florida. It's not, it's rare, but it happens. I mean...
Yeah.
I'm more concerned about a hurricane.
Hurricane?
I mean, you just get that steady, straight wind all the time.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, the hurricanes, they do, tornadoes are spawned from the hurricanes.
Should have thought about that before, I guess.
I mean, that's a good question, actually, with the ten-foot overhang.
I know, it's huge. You get a lot of leverage. I know your house insurance, if you have a hip roof or a gable roof, you pay more for the gable than you do the, yeah, because the wind can get down there and just pick that right up.
So, we're still, you got the wheel loader?
We'll put that out.
Is that one of them there?
All right.
Okay.
Next, equipment?
Next is a brand-new department that we implemented this year in the general fund. It's in equipment and vehicle maintenance. We've included a mechanic position, a full-time position in that department. Mike and I and the management have discussed someone being responsible and accountable for all the equipment, district equipment, tracking repairs, costs involved. So, when we go to surplus them or repair, we know exactly how much we've invested, how often we're replacing these things, and how much maintenance we're...
Yeah.
And having someone accountable, we really need someone accountable for all our equipment. So, this is a brand-new department this year that hasn't been there in the past. We are going to remove the merit increase, as they will not receive one during this year's budget.
Any questions?
The only question I had on it, with the mechanic, it's going to take somebody to, one of the gals probably hires somebody part-time at least to get all this stuff on computer of what's been serviced, what the service records are. The mechanic is not going to have time to do it and to put everything on paper, so, or put everything on computer. So, it's going to take somebody part-time at least.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of do have a, I do have a kind of a plan for that, but I just haven't brought it to Tanya yet or Omar, because I'm kind of feeling everybody out over there. I hope the person that does come on is a person that's already here. He has a program already, so we'll incorporate that into, you know, to the inventory and all the service work, so...
Do you use some type of system, like a ticket system or anything like when this job needs to be done, short ticket, do it?
John has a program that he has, and he actually keeps it on his phone. He showed it to me on his phone, so he can tell, say, a vehicle needs an oil change, it'll come up. So, yes, we do have a ticket system.
That's just one of the, the manual waiting.
Yeah, it's a PM program.
And this person will take care of what, which equipment?
Everything.
Every piece of equipment we have, this mechanic, too, can handle?
District.
District, yeah.
District. No, no, and the golf. He'll be in charge of golf, so, so, say, like a gator's been smashed up. John's going to, they're going to know that day that this vehicle has been damaged, and then he'll come to us. In the past, there was no accountability before.
Okay, so we're going to have one mechanic or two mechanics?
Well...
We will have one.
We'll have one, yeah.
Well, that's what I just asked, and you said no, it was golf.
Billy Casper currently has one mechanic and two assistant mechanics.
Okay.
So, they're going to maintain there. We don't know if they're going to eliminate one mechanic or keep the...
I'm more concerned about the big tractors that we have and not the small...
The mechanic, per se, may not repair some of the large items, but they will be accountable to say what that repair is, track it, let us know, and find the right...
Preventive maintenance.
Yes.
To get it correct. We want someone tracking each piece of equipment, make sure they check it in, it's in the good condition, someone check that out, bring it back. So, they'll be responsible and accountable for all the equipment. They may not necessarily repair all the equipment, but they're responsible for it.
Okay.
There'll be things that we'll send out that we can't fix in-house, but we're still going to know what was done to it.
And that was my understanding.
And in the past, we didn't have that. If we sent the tractor out, we didn't know, you know, actually what happened, what they put into it, if they put a start or whatever. This will be all, all tracked now.
Okay.
Okay, we're good. Ready to go into contingency?
Yeah.
Does that include the software as well? Do all those tracking, is that additional stuff going to cost?
He has a program now, and, you know, we're going to look at that.
Okay.
This is a golf capital, eighty-two twenty, going up one-hundred-and-sixty-six percent. Is that something that they have requested in a budget request?
So, that number ties into that summary sheet that we gave you at the beginning, six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. That is all that they're requesting this year. And all the items inside this two-point-four, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars is all coming from reserves. We cannot balance this budget without dipping into reserves for all of these items.
Right.
So, you have a portion of the golf subsidy, you have the golf capital, you have the RV storage park, and then you have the clubhouse renovation at one-point-two.
Okay, then, we could get to the, I would touch at one-point-two million for the kitchen, but the project, the RV storage project, three-hundred thousand dollars, you know, I've worked the numbers on that everywhere we work. There's just no way to pay that back in thirty years, so...
It doesn't pay back.
Do I?
Yeah, I said it doesn't pay back.
No, that's what I'm saying. We, Mike, you and I talked about this. We've got to get together again when we do next week to sit down and go, why that's up there and get with them and try to get that number down, because that, that number eliminates the project.
My question on it is...
What can we collect, like on a, let's just...
A boat.
Okay, let's figure a boat, and let's figure a forty-eight foot or forty-six foot RV.
Okay, and we've been around and talked with the different places that do this, like Tanglewood, and we went down to a storage business that they're going to get started, which they don't know what they're doing, so they're going to never make it. You're getting fifty, fifty-five dollars for a boat, you're getting up to about a hundred for the large RVs. They've graduated from there, you know.
Per month.
Per month.
Well, Mike...
The boats are the six-foot high and eighteen, eighteen feet long.
Mm-hmm.
That's down.
My question is, when I was looking through a materialist, it didn't say anything about whether it was going to be secure. I mean, is there going to be a gate?
Yeah.
That what, the people will have a key?
Yeah.
Like the racquetball or something?
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything about lighting either.
Yeah, that includes lighting, that includes the bay where they can wash off, empty the sewage coming in. What we didn't plan on, we were going to like gravel, crush and run it. Now, they're talking about they have to have certain areas paved because of county guidelines. So, that's why I want to go back into it and refresh it again, because they, we just got hit with the guidelines. It was just impossible to me.
Well, I know they tried this a few years ago, and it didn't happen, so...
That's what I wanted. We can leave that in there as it, right now, because if it doesn't work, we'll make it, or, like, leave, forget it. But we've got the guy to sit got the guy to sit down with us and try to reduce that. Another thing is too, when we, when we talked about it, and if it's, it's in here, uh, the picture of it, he was, he's talking about doing that whole road. Well, we only wanted about a third of that road. You know, when you go down that road, uh, there's an electric system, water down to end. We only wanted to come back up at a third. Well, he's, he's got it figured out for the whole road. We'd never use that much space.
Yeah, Drew designed it to use the whole property.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the.
You're talking about, my estimate, you're talking about six football fields.
Well, how, how many trailers do you estimate are in the community?
Well, we've, we've, she's did some research on it, she's one of the needs assessment.
I, um, I took, I only took the survey from the people who own a boat or RV and said they would be interested, and there was over forty, at least.
How many of them are, are stored inside their garages? I would say eighty percent of those are stored inside their own garage, and they're not gonna move them. I got one, well, I don't have one now, but I had one that was in my garage.
These are people, I mean, I, I can't speak to that. These people said they own a boat or RV, and they are interested in us building storage. Several people I spoke with have their boat or RV stor, stored in other facilities.
So would you make this available to people outside the community or only community only?
Uh, that wasn't my plan in the beginning, but, you know, I spoke to the board, you know, um, that's why I want to go back and look at this again, and I wouldn't even attempt to bring this to the board until we had some contractual agreements. These people said, yeah, you build it, we'll give you fifty dollars a month for, you know, a year, I guarantee you that before we go building it. I don't want to build it and all and say, well, you know, hell, I gotta really do it.
Well, the side benefit is if we build it, then we can enforce our code restrictions of no boats in driveway.
Absolutely.
And you're gonna force people to go over there to some degree.
And RVs in driveway.
Exactly.
Trucks being parked there all day long.
Exactly.
For weeks.
Cars under repair, up on blocks, all that stuff can go away.
But, uh, there'd be no way to, to be sensible about this, to do anything, but we know, we got some contracts laid out there that people are gonna sign, if it is built, yes, I'll move it in there. Then we can go back and do the dollars and censuses. Right now, I just want to stop and go back to this three hundred thousand dollars, work that thing back down to the size it's supposed to be, not that whole area, and, uh.
Okay.
Go from there.
Right. That also included, uh, security cameras, uh, that if anyone went in at night, uh, would go back to security.
Well, that part I saw, but I didn't see anything about lighting, and I didn't see anything about a secure gate on the materialist.
Right, that was the finished project, you know, that was finished completely, and I, my opinion, I thought it was way, way too high, because I thought we could do a lot of the stuff in, in-house also, uh, but, you know.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we need it, that's the issue, so.
Yeah.
Hope you can get it done.
Let me hit it again. Let me, let me get this number down some.
Isn't Tanglewood a capacity for their RV storage?
Well, there you go, built-in customers there, then.
So that's kinda.
Another thing is too, if you, if you would look at Tanglewood and use that standard to build ours, we could build a place for seventy thousand dollars, because they don't have any roads, they don't have gravel, they don't have the fencing tore down, and they're stacked in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they're just.
But they have a captive audience too, now, don't forget that.
Yeah, they do, they do, they have a captive audience, yeah, but they're full.
Did you check with, um, whatever it is across the road from us, uh, by the trailer?
Corral?
Yeah, Camper Corral.
Camper Corral?
Were they charged?
No.
Well, I tell you.
I, I did, I, I've checked all the places that I can find information on. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I do have the information.
I know Larry, Larry DeBryan puts his motorhome over there, and so does Gary Johnson, so there, you can get information from them.
It's on their website. It's all listed on their website.
Oh, is it?
Which, we got sheets from these people, though.
Okay.
Their charges, but it's, it's.
I like the idea, just like you, I don't like three hundred dollars.
No, well, we can't, we can't do that. Okay, let's be, be, be positioned on that, if it's ours, you guys just leave it.
Yeah, leave it there.
Back to somewhere down the trail, figure out where we're at, and Mike and I'll get back on this now. Anything else on, uh, the, uh, contingency?
No, I think that pretty much rounds it out. Contingency, the forty-eight thousand, pretty consistent. Uh, we usually use that as a percentage based on revenue, um, and then the two-hundred-thousand for golf subsidy ties into the other two-sixty. They're requesting a hundred, four-hundred-and-sixty thousand in subsidy total. Two-hundred of that, we can actually subsidize from current operating revenues. The other two-sixty comes from reserve.
Okay.
So that's why you see the split for that same line at twice.
And that's not the kind of budget we want to create. We should be able to pay for all of our current expenses with current operating revenues.
Sure.
I mean, if we have, if we do subsidy to the golf and for the capital, we want to try to create a budget for you that's balanced. Now, projects like the RV storage and the kitchen, don't, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to balance a budget with those numbers in here. We just want to try to, that's, that's my goal, is to try to bring to you, you know, a balanced budget. So when we, we have a few adjustments, uh, when we come back to talk about the general fund again, but we'll be, you know, golf will be a pretty extensive discussion in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, it's our big product.
Yes, it is.
We good?
If anyone, flip over to tab three, we'll talk about the RV storage again. I think we've talked about it. Those are the two capital improvement funds. First one's the, uh.
There's a RV storage.
I don't have a tab three.
It's yellow.
Way back.
Oh, we're gonna skip all this.
Skip, skip to the.
Skip, oh, okay. All right.
We don't have time for that.
We don't?
No, we don't have time.
Oh, I got it, okay.
So the first one's the RV storage, once again, it's that three hundred thousand. Well, he's gonna come back with Mike, and we'll see if that fluctuates, and we'll change it for the next budget meeting.
Yeah, that's what we, we want to do, uh.
And there's the estimation, we provided the estimate in the back, right behind it.
Yeah.
Just to explain to you what Drew's.
I went through that and read an email or two that's come in against it and so forth like that. Uh, that person absolutely don't have any damn idea what he's talking about, so we're, we're coming back with the numbers and, and, uh, we certainly have the support, I can tell you that, but I wouldn't, I have no way we can spend that much money.
Next tab is for the clubhouse kitchen. We went ahead and, uh, budgeted for one-point-two million, um, unless the board decides something different, they want to set a different budget.
I have a question there to, to bring up, or just, I guess, just to bring up between us, so while we can talk about it. Did anybody else get the impression that this, uh, the, uh, the kitchen was, uh, going to be what I would call absolutely first-class? That's, that's kind of what they were figuring. Uh, now, in my opinion, he's way overboard on what he's talking about now, how much, I don't have a clue what, how much overboard I'm talking about, but I got the impression that when he did it, he wanted to do it absolutely first-class.
Well, that's, that's what he's getting paid for.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, he's probably getting kicked, well, it doesn't matter. Uh, my, my only concern about this one-point-two million, it doesn't generate any more revenue. I mean, we're gonna still serve the same number of meals out of it. Um, and I would like to, and I don't know how we would get it, is to get Kevin's impression on, what does he really need there in terms of serving the restaurant needs and the member needs and everybody else that goes there, and if we have to spend one-point-two million, I guess we do, but to me, that just seems, just way over the top.
I'll tell you one thing, and I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. One thing that I saw, you can, and I remember this distinctly from building these places, he took, talked about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for equipment for the kitchen.
Yeah.
Okay, now I want to tell you something. Most bankruptcies in America file today are restaurants.
That's right.
That equipment's out there, new and used, and there's companies, it's all, it's all they sell, not refurbished, ones that have just been used for six months and went broke. And I've seen those restaurants, I've been in the court, just seen major restaurants go, bone up in nine months, and the equipment, there's companies that are buying it. I don't know why we can't go at least look at used equipment. I mean, if you look at it this way, and it's, it's good, good equipment, ours is gonna be used the next night.
That's right.
It's gonna be used equipment.
Right. It's like buying a new car, driving off a lot that's used.
Yeah, I think they, we ought to really look.
Well, you can't blame Kevin. I mean, man, he says I'm gonna get the gem of, of the gems, but.
And you can't, you can't blame the architect.
No, I don't blame anybody, but.
He's gonna get a cut of that.
I just would like to somehow.
The problem we've got there is somebody knowing the, the good equipment out of the used equipment from the bad from the jump.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, one-point-two million is a lot of money. I agree wholeheartedly with what, what Kurt said. I don't, I haven't heard anybody say there's gonna be a revenue increase at all, we're not gonna get more business, we're not gonna get more banquet, we're not gonna get more weddings.
I offered that opportunity, but you guys didn't like that either.
And I, I was set back a little bit when he said five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I was thinking, when he said that, I was thinking, that's the whole problem.
Yeah, that's a great number.
I said, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then they said, and that's just for the equipment, and we're going to be keeping our freezers, and we're, and I'm thinking, that, that's a lot of money to make a couple pizzas and change the menu.
Well, that's it, me too. I, I thought, well, we'll go through the process, you know, and really see how it boils out, but it's.
And I don't see that that kitchen putting that kind of money in there is, gonna attract a lot more people into the community.
It won't.
Because now we can say we have a one-point-two million dollar kitchen.
Well, we got a gold-serving, uh, area.
Well, the, the fact is, is our.
And you can get a twelve-dollar meal.
Our revenue, our restaurant revenue is going down, right? I mean, this year it's done off from last year.
That's down, but point seven thousand.
Well, the restaurant revenue in it, and I asked the question, I think, a couple meetings ago, and, and I'd have to go back through all the numbers again, I don't have them in front of me. He actually said it, because of his expenses for the waitstaff to provide the services to the members, that had increased so much that his total bottom line had changed because of his expenses with, and, and Mike.
That's true.
Was that correct?
Yes, that is true, yeah.
And, uh, I mean, we could go back, but the, I can almost guarantee that with the revenues down this year, you will see a proposed increase in, in meals and, and liquor, food and beverage. I can almost guarantee, and I haven't had that discussion with him, but I, I can tell you it's not gonna happen.
Well, that's a waiting seat attitude.
Yeah.
We're, we're actually talking about having a few meetings internally, like you just said. How, how would we generate more revenue? If you gave us the opportunity, how would we do it? So Kevin's gonna be involved in that.
Yes, he does.
Conversation, and we want to hear what he has to say. You know, this is a top-notch kitchen, is it, is this what we need? How can we generate more revenue? Make pots, weddings, I mean, that's.
Does he need more space? I mean, they're kind of blowing out the walls, and, and I mean, if we just redid what he has and tweaked it a little bit, is that good enough? That's kind of where I'm at.
I'm not looking to put a Band-Aid on something. I mean, I, I think that it should be for a little bit of future expansion, but not necessarily a million-two at this point. I don't know, I'm just saying.
I agree. Well, I agree with what Kurt said, let's play it out, and see when they get back what they are gonna do for us.
And if we, you know, were actually went out and got a loan for this or a portion of this, I sent you some numbers about what the payback would be.
Right.
So if you saw that.
Yeah.
Depending if it's a fifteen-year loan, twenty-year.
I'm gonna give you the go-ahead and go borrow that nine-hundred thousand right now. If you can get it at three percent, you go get it right now.
I was, uh.
You aren't gonna touch it for three percent. But that's okay.
Well, I was.
I know, you're just shooting a number, that's fine.
Shooting at a, at a, at a good percentage rate, but more, more likely probably four or four-point-two might be what we could borrow that kind of money for.
Maybe you should talk to Heartland, see if they can work the deal for you.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
There, there you can go to them first time, say here.
A ton of it.
Hey, well, you know.
That would be something we put out for advertising too, and they, that would be, we definitely.
We're gonna borrow nine-hundred thousand, start with.
Sure, whatever.
ours, we'll, we'll leave the one-point-two in there until.
Yeah.
Progresses a little bit farther along, and if it changes, we'll, we'll adjust.
Plus, plus in there, potential contract, read that they get a percentage of the total build-out.
That's why there's eighty-seven thousand in there.
So my question would be, do they get a percentage of the five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars even though?
No, they only get, what, twenty-five-hundred is their.
Retainer.
Retainer. So if we don't do anything with them, they pay twenty-five-hundred.
But what I'm saying is, if they did the project, let's say we went with, ahead with them for a million-two, they'll get that, whatever was, was it eight percent?
They get the percentage.
Eight percent.
Seven percent of that, of which five-hundred-and-fifty thousand is equipment that's just kind of brought in, plonked in, set up.
Well, and you don't know what the kickbacks are getting on the other end of the manufacturer.
But manufacturer rebates.
That's why you want to buy your own equipment, starting.
Well, we would save, we would save sales tax, you know, if we were able, if we had the opportunity to, to pay for equipment ourselves.
You better believe it.
We would have a good savings in sales tax. In fact, I would highly recommend it, highly recommend it.
That's a lot of money.
Our tab four, uh, goes into another summary, it provides our five-year capital, uh, planning, just to see some of the things that we predict in the future coming up. Um, some of the items that are in there, pool complex, fitness renovations, district office, are there any comments or?
The only thing I'd like to see, recreation, equipment, again, expanding our, offering our amenities, that that number increases by fifteen or twenty grand, I don't know, I'll leave that up to, to Neil to decide how much extra money she might need, uh, to kind of keep this program going forward, you know. I'm, I'm suggesting, you know, fifteen grand or something is a, a number, in a, over and above what you already got here, so, which obviously can change, it's just a future number, but what I want to do is create the avenue of you thinking about, how do we make this community better in terms of what we can offer the residents and landowners that had come here on an annual basis, so. I'd like to see that number go up somehow.
Okay, anything else?
Tab five is just the organizational chart, you can flip it over.
I got some comments on that too. I don't like your chart.
Oh, okay.
No, no, just kidding.
That's my chart.
Okay, no, I do like your chart, but.
I'm sorry.
You know, a, a well-run organization, you're always training your replacement. No matter where you are in this ladder, you should be training your replacement so that someday you can move up the ladder, or if you go away, there's already somebody in place. So manager-wise, you should be instilling that kind of thought into your people. There are four positions on this organizational chart that probably cannot be trained from within, which would be the general manager and the three directors. Those people have special skills, just like Omar, CPA, you have special training in general, uh, general manager, and you obviously have a lot of training in, in, and, uh, recreation community services. So my point is, I always would like to, to hire from without, these positions would be hired outside the organization. They should be paid a competitive wage, they should also have a fringe benefit package that is very competitive, if second to none. And within that fringe benefit package, I would always like to offer stuff that the perceived value is much higher than the actual cost. So what I'm proposing here is that the general manager and the three directors have as part of their fringe benefit package, a family golf membership, a hundred percent paid. It basically would cost the district nothing to offer that, and it would increase the amenity or the, uh, fringe benefit package for these people if we have to go out and replace them, and it might keep the people that we have on staff now here a little bit longer. You guys are working forty hours a week, I mean, the odds of you playing golf and actually costing us money would be on the weekends or whatever, and so that's very minimal, so I would like to propose that this board increase your fringe benefit package to include a golf membership.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. Are we talking about a family membership?
Yes, so it would be, and I know Mike wants to redefine what family membership means. To me, it's a couple, so it'd be...
Right.
A couple, two people. Two people get free golf, free cards, free everything.
Can you talk with Mike in preparation for our next meeting and see what it takes to do that, we need him here to vote, we're gonna be honest to have him here, but I agree with that.
I agree with that, and I think it had been brought already to the district as a discussion, as a point, and I'm, I'd have to go back into my notes, because this was about eight months ago and I had the conversation, and there was a reason at the time that they didn't, now, it wasn't part of the package, I guess, maybe that was it. I know Billy Casper, as part of their employee benefits package, has a program for their people, but it didn't spill over into the district because they're two separate organizations. But I would support that, you know, I don't know what it takes to have that done.
I don't think it can take anything.
Really can take anything.
It's our golf course, it isn't Billy Casper, so...
No, 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 I'm saying, when I say take, to have it incorporated into their package, is all I'm saying.
This has to be rewritten, I would think.
If the board would like a resolution, we can do that and take a vote, and that'll make it formal.
If you want to do it that way, I don't care, as long as it happens.
Okay.
And I'd make it happen October first, just like the new program starts October first.
I wouldn't have a problem with it not being on a major record, because if you, if you put this in a resolution or whatever, I think you're gonna have to claim that on your taxes, aren't you?
It doesn't have to. Would we have to claim it not? No, fringe benefits to employees are not claimed on tax return. Yeah, so we don't have to do a resolution, I was just opening the door for it, so we can just do that as a normal budget process.
And the reason I would like it there, because a few years from now, we're not gonna be here, and we have to replace somebody or if somebody moves on or whatever, and I just want it to be available for the next staff to be able to discuss that, so I can continue on. Obviously, you can change your benefit packages every year if you want to, so in the future, you don't want to do it, then you can take it back out, but right now, I'd like to put it in.
And it's merely a benefit while they're employed, so it's not like it's a grant they're gonna carry on, as in the past, some situations have carried on, but it would be as they're employed.
Okay, let me ask you one thing, so this is gonna be for the general manager, finance, community services, facilities, and security director, four of them.
Four people.
Be family membership?
Right.
And it'll begin upon our approval for the rest of the year, and then...
Well, we could start it now. I was thinking October first, but we started now, if you want to go ahead.
Then we, everybody start now, and then it'll be capped until...
Can we take it away?